Okay, Mayor Heading, I have my devices rolling and the floor is yours.
Great, thank you and good evening. This is the regular meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council. It is Tuesday, April 27th, 2021. It is 5:30 PM and this meeting is being held via teleconference. I'll ask that the clerk establish a quorum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis, she's here. Councilmember Barton has not joined the meeting quite yet. Councilmember Davis.
I am present.
Councilmember Heller.
Here.
And Mayor Heading.
Present, we do have a quorum, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020, this meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on Cable Channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for this meeting. Thank you and welcome. With that, I will go ahead and ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. If we could have the flag on the screen, we will go ahead with our Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, no closed session items to report.
Thank you, Chris, very much appreciated. With that, we will move to Mayor and Councilmember announcements and reports. I'll begin this evening with some good news with regard to COVID-19 in San Luis Obispo County and in general across the state and nation. San Luis Obispo County has, as of today, 21,138 cases, eight new cases as of today. We have six hospitalized and two patients in ICU. Our total deaths are 260 and Morro Bay has 435 cases so far. On the vaccine front, some good news. The San Luis Obispo County has received just over 138,000 vaccines. 86,621 of our residents have been vaccinated. Of those, almost 58,000 have been fully vaccinated and about 29,000 have been partially vaccinated. As you probably have heard statewide now, any individual age 16 and older is eligible to receive a vaccination. There are three operative sites that continue to be run by the county. One at Quest College, one in Paso Robles, the other in Arroyo Grande. And there is a new website that you should go to if you do want to make an appointment for your vaccine. The new website is the state website. It's myturn-ca or dot ca.gov. That's M-Y-T-U-R-N dot C-A dot gov. And you can go there to make your vaccination appointment. You also can call your local retail pharmacy and/or certain other healthcare providers that also are administering vaccines throughout the county. The Johnson &amp; Johnson single-dose vaccine that was paused recently has been returned to the market and is now available as the only single-injection vaccine. That pause was discontinued as of yesterday. Good news on the CDC guidance front. First of all, I should let you know that San Luis Obispo County will move into the orange tier tomorrow, 4/28. And you can go to readyslow.org for information on the changes that will be allowed as a result of that less restrictive tier. Today, the CDC Centers for Disease Control announced new guidance for fully vaccinated people. This again is for individuals who have been fully vaccinated either with the Pfizer or Moderna vaccine, receiving both doses, or having received a single dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. The new guidance is this for fully vaccinated people. You can visit with other fully vaccinated people indoors without wearing masks or physical distancing. You can visit with unvaccinated people, including children, from a single household who are at low risk for severe COVID-19 disease indoors without wearing masks or physical distancing. You may participate in outdoor activities and recreation without a mask except in certain crowded settings and venues. You can resume domestic travel and refrain from testing before or after travel or self-quarantine after travel. You can refrain from testing before leaving the United States for international travel unless required by the destination you are going to. And you can refrain from self-quarantine after arriving back in the United States. You can refrain from testing following a known exposure if you're asymptomatic, with some exceptions for specific settings. You can refrain from quarantine following a known exposure if you're asymptomatic. You can refrain from routine screening, testing if asymptomatic and feasible according to the guidelines. For now, however, fully vaccinated people should continue to, one, take precautions in indoor public settings like wearing a well-fitted mask that's indoors. Number two, wear well-fitted masks when visiting indoors with unvaccinated people who are at increased risk for severe COVID-19 disease or who have an unvaccinated household member who is at increased risk for severe COVID-19 disease. Three, you should wear well-fitted masks when visiting indoors with unvaccinated people from multiple households. Four, you should avoid indoor large-sized in-person gatherings. Five, you should get tested if you are experiencing COVID-19 symptoms. Six, you should follow the guidance issued by your individual employer. And lastly, number seven, you should follow the CDC and Health Department travel requirements and recommendations. And all of this information is currently available on readyslow.org. And if you just click on Mask Guidance, you will find all of the information I just shared. So overall, good news, we're moving in the right direction. There have been some easing of restrictions for fully vaccinated people and we will be moving to the orange tier as of tomorrow. Thank you, that completes my report and I'll go to Councilmember Addis, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of announcements. I'm sure that many people saw the recent news that with redistricting, California is going to lose a congressional seat. And many people might be wondering about what that means. So I wanted to share two upcoming events with you. The first is on April 29th at noon. The League of Women Voters emailed council and some folks and asked if we would share this. The League of Women Voters is hosting the Redistricting Commissioner for our area. And this webinar is part of the League of Women Voters Lunch with the League series. And they're going to be talking about redistricting. And then on May 17th at 5:30 with Afternoons with Addis, I will also be hosting our commissioner. His name is Commissioner Purnachari. And he's going to talk about what redistricting means. So when we all vote in 2022, things are going to be a little different. And we hope I'll see you, I hope we'll see you at each of these events.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Councilmember Barton, please, any announcements?
At the moment, I'm in, that's my big announcement. I made it back in time for the meeting, but I could not get in on Zoom and the city staff helped walk me through a glitch of some sort, so I'm here. So that's what I have to say.
Well, we're glad you're here, welcome. Councilmember Heller, sir, any announcements?
Yes, no announcements for me tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, sir. And Councilmember Davis, please.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no announcements.
All right, and I will move to City Manager Scott Collins, sir.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Mayor, council members and community members. I'm not sure if I announced this at the last council meeting, but I will announce this now as I did at the Public Works Advisory Board meeting last week and Citizen Finance Advisory Committee last week as well. Eric Casares of Corolla Engineers, who served as our WORF Program Manager beginning in April 2018. He has left the firm, Corolla Firm, to pursue other career aspirations with his family's small business. And so he has been replaced by Kyle Rohr of Corolla Engineers to serve as the WORF Program Manager. And Kyle has experience both in Morro Bay and on the WORF project. So we will continue to be well-served by Corolla in that role. Also wanted to announce that the city participated in, has been participating in, keeping our community clean and also in a regional effort to do so. And the regional effort of keep Central Coast community clean has won a prestigious award in marketing. It's a nationwide competition. And really just wanted to thank Damaris Hanson of Public Works Staff for participating on the city's behalf in that effort. And we will be rolling out banners and things like that to again encourage our visitors to throw trash and recycling away properly. So just wanted to make those quick announcements, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Collins, appreciate that very much. With that, we'll go ahead and move to our presentations. First, we have Assistance with Utilities presentation. This is by the CPUC Local Government Liaison. And I believe we'll welcome in Christopher Moore, Christopher, welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much for having me. Okay if I share my screen right here?
Yes, indeed.
All right. Yeah, thank you very much for having me. My name is Christopher Moore and I'm a local government and community liaison with the California Public Utilities Commission. The commission's commonly referred to as the CPUC. I'm part of an outreach team that has liaisons across the state. I work with city and county governments and community organizations from LA County to San Luis Obispo County. And the goal of this very short presentation is to make sure the council is aware of how I could be a resource. I'm always happy to be a resource in Morro Bay because it's one of my favorite places in my territory to visit. First, a little background on an agency that can often seem somewhat obscure. The CPUC was created in 1911 by constitutional amendment to rein in the power of the Southern Pacific Railroad. Namely, the rates it charged, common practice at the time was for a railroad to take a look at farmer's books in order to determine what rates it would pay to get goods to market. Our authority was soon expanded to include investor monopolies in the energy, water, and telecommunications sectors. And our authorities evolved with those industries as well as public priorities. For example, rail freight now has substantial competition, so we now no longer regulate rates and our roles largely confine to safety. In the energy sector, rates are still a significant factor, but we now have substantial new responsibilities regarding state climate goals as well as regulating wildfire risk and public health risk from public safety power shut-offs by electric utilities. In recent history, we've gained oversight over transportation network companies such as Uber, Lyft, and given up our oversight authority over household good movers and hot air balloon charter companies. High-profile decisions in the last year. Of course, around COVID-19, so we've enacted shut-off moratoriums for energy utilities as well as telecom providers. We're now requiring 72-hour battery backup and resiliency plans from wireless providers. We've expanded the universal telephone service program, NOZ Lifeline, to cover higher mobile data allowances and subsidies for voice-over-internet. We've put the grid on a path to 60% generation with renewables by 2035 as well as put in measures to support the interconnection and commercialization of microgrids to make communities more resilient during wildfires and public safety power shut-offs. In the next year, we're going to be considering, I mean, we're looking into another severe wildfire season. So grid reliability is going to continue to be a big issue. We're looking into specifications for utility pole database. And we're looking to advance transportation electrification as well as further customer protections around solar. We're trying to improve the physical and cybersecurity of the electric grid as well as we will be making a determination on whether utilities should subsidize all electric buildings with repair dollars. These decisions are going to be made by our five-panel, member panel of commissioners who are appointed for staggered terms by the governor and subject to Senate approval. These decisions are subject to a number of formal requirements. This is sort of the unique flavor of the CPUC as we operate in what are called proceedings. And this may be partly why I have a job is that we don't, navigating these proceedings can be difficult. There is room for substantial input by community groups, by cities, but the barrier can be somewhat high at times because it takes substantial time to participate substantively. Around public safety power shut-offs, I know the county has retained legal assistance. Some cities do this too, the city of Malibu. But we also have private citizens who come before us and are quite active. And sometimes, but then sometimes can apply for compensation. Sadly, cities are only eligible for compensation if they've actually had an event and are looking to recoup costs due to utility caused damage. But I can help navigate all those things. I can also, we also have a number of informal processes of which you can participate and provide comment. We now have allow comments on the docket card, which means that basically you're just going on to our site and typing in your comments and those now become part of the record, so it can be considered in decision-making. So, you know, from my end, what's important is to know what's, you know, what the issues of importance to the city are. I send out a newsletter once a month to try to keep people abreast of what's going on. I've also, I also try to interact with community groups. And I know I've heard from your chief, Chief Knuckles, regarding some of our maps on high-fire-threat districts. So really, I'm here to be a resource and, you know, of whatever issues are of interest to the city. So I'll stop there in terms of, you know, of the interest of time, see if you have any questions, if there's anything I should be particularly apprised of for, you know, regarding your city.
Thank you, Christopher. And your contact information, sir?
Yes, I can give you, my phone number is 213-220-1344.
Okay, great.
And you can email me. And Dana has my info, but you can email me at christophermoore@cpuc.ca.gov.
Great, thank you so much. Let me just ask if any of our council members have any questions? Hearing none. Chris, thank you for being here, very much appreciated and look forward to interacting and learning more about what's going on. Appreciate your proactive stance and coming in and sharing with us this evening.
Excellent, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, have a great evening.
You too.
And with that, we'll move to a local presentation. We have our esteemed leader of our Recreation Department, Kirk Carmichael. Kirk, welcome. Excited to hear about what's coming soon in the area of recreation.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And council members and community members, I've got just a quick PowerPoint presentation and we'll ramble on a little bit and then be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Dana's going to help me out with sharing my screen. This is your Recreation Services Division program update. Next slide, please, Ms. Dana. So I started off with just a quick mission statement and basically what we're doing is providing the Recreation Enrichment Programs experiences for the residents and visitors of the Estero Bay. We do serve Los Osos, Taiutus, as well as Morro Bay and do extend up into Cambria as well for folks that are looking for recreational opportunities that we can provide. I wanted to just go ahead and quickly outline our, the three stages really of pre-COVID-19, what we were during COVID-19, what we've been doing and then moving on forward from here on, here forward. So pre-COVID-19, we had four full-timers and five part-time staff working here in the office with about 125 plus or minus part-time seasonal staff. I went ahead and put down some budget information there showing our revenues and expenses for pre-COVID time. Let me see here. And, pardon me. During COVID, we reduced down to one full-time staffer, and that was me, and three rotating fill-in part-time staff, one being our aquatics coordinator, one our kids' club coordinator, and then an office assistant helping to pick up phone calls and do whatever else is going on here in the office. We did have our one full-time staff, that's our youth services coordinator out in the field with 25 or so part-time staff helping with our youth services programs, as well as the swim pool. And then went ahead and put down our actual budget numbers from fiscal 1920. As you can see, we did drop in our revenues as well as slightly in expenses. Moving on forward, we are looking to continue with the one full-timer, that's me in the office, and two part-time staff. I've got our senior services coordinator returning as well as an office assistant returning to help out here. And then our field staff, again, our youth services coordinator will be out in the field along with our aquatics coordinator and then full, excuse me, 50-plus part-time staff. You will see for the 2020 projected budget, our revenues were pretty darn good and I'm projecting out for the rest of the next two months with our expenses dropped significantly. And just to expand on that and reasons behind that, just so you guys don't think that we can do everything with nothing. We did move forward with a new goal during the COVID time and that was to recover 100% of our program costs. We also raised prices of our property use and that was per the fee study that we had conducted a couple of years ago, really generating the revenue with film permits and other uses of city property. And we also partnered then with San Luis Coastal Unified School District to provide full-time emergency childcare where the district supported us financially and contributed on behalf of their students. I'll move to next slide, please, Dana. So these are the programs and activities that we canceled during COVID-19. And I broke it down into the two, four, six, six areas that our office manages, beginning with the youth. And I'll expand on those because we did have to cancel our kids' club and camp, but we did morph to the emergency childcare program that we conducted here at the community center until we moved back onto the Delmar campus. Sports-wise, we lost girls' softball, but we were able to partner with San Luis Obispo Girls' Softball Association and they picked up our kids and provided coaches and the equipment for them to operate, or to them to participate during this time. We also lost footsall, flag football, basketball, soccer, esports tournaments, and holiday camps. As far as adults are concerned, we pretty much focused on softball programs and we did have to, we did not offer our masters, co-ed, or our men's leagues during the COVID time. Along the lines of the seniors, of course, the senior center did close, but we did lose out on the activity classes, tai chi, paces, paces, things like that. We also lost out on being able to host our senior nutrition lunches in the center. So that became a drop, a swing-by pickup of lunch or delivered to you. We also were not able to host our annual wellness fair or the open house and wildly popular for the first time Kentucky Derby party. We also are able, we're not able to offer the life drawing, 39-plus dances, or bingo, which is a big fundraiser for the senior center. Moving to, let's see, aquatics. We had to temporarily close the pool and cancel out group lessons. Once we were back open and going, we were able to offer lap swim, offer Robles, and private lessons. As far as events were concerned, unfortunately, many community events were canceled, put on hold. That's our downtown Halloween event, our Mermaid Pirate Parade, Fourth of July holiday tree lighting, Parents' Night Out, Monster Ski Competition, our Labor Day softball tournament. And we moved our 51st Annual Rock to Pure Run. That was done virtually, which we thought might be, limp us along, but it proved to be a money loser for us, but we gave it a try. And then unfortunately, we had to cancel our 52nd Annual, which was scheduled for this summer. Administratively, we did lose our activity classes, karate, things like that. Also the ability to permit use of city property just due to the restrictions, of course. We did lose out on much record-keeping, being able to be quick on the turnaround for phone calls and responding to the needs of the community. And unfortunately, canceled our Recreation and Parks Commission meetings for most of that year. And next slide, please, Dana, thank you. These, this is a listing of the programs and activities that we offered during COVID-19. And starting with our youth again, we were able to partnership with the San Luis Coastal Unified School District again to provide full-time emergency childcare. We are still continuing on with the program. We're back at Delmar Elementary School and will wrap up the school year there and then hopefully morph to our regular kids' club program. We were able to put together again our junior lifeguard program as well as, let's see, I already talked about the girls' softball partnering, okay. The senior center. Let me see, I lost my space, here I am. Seniors, we provided the Morro Bay Cures and Connects program through this office. Our telephones were ringing off the hook. We went as far as to deliver packages to folks. I personally delivered static medical equipment when the need was there. So basically, anything that we could do to keep us going. Let me see. The outdoor classes, we partnershiped with Slope County Health, Public Health, pardon me, to offer a stretching class twice a week and that takes place right out in front of the building here at the community center. The aquatics program, we, as I said, temporarily closed, but canceled our group lessons. I think I went over that one already, I must have slipped, missed a slide, I apologize. Let me see, and then administratively, we had limited facility use. We were able to put together some film permits and we participated in the EOC with other city staff. Some of the, some of the facility use were essential business kitchen use. We've got folks that are making food or they were making the hand sanitizers and sunscreens and things of that nature. We also opened up our buildings for COVID testing and census work. And let me see, we were basically the call support and And let me see, we were basically the call support and the information center for quite some time during COVID. So I think I covered that. Let's move on to the next slide, please. Thank you. Moving forward with programs and activities, the kids' club, kids' camp, again, we are looking forward to bringing that back this summer and then into next fall. Again, we are offering our junior lifeguards at a modified plan again this summer, as we did last summer, which again sold out in about a minute. So we've got 300 kids will be out there this summer participating in our junior guard program. Let's see. As far as sports, we are hopefully moving forward with soccer in the fall and then basketball in the upcoming winter. Moving to adults, it's again, we'll try to pick up the softball program with our adult softball program. We'll see on that one. The seniors, we are trying to pick up again our Questa College Emeritus Classes, very popular free classes, and the city of Morro Bay has the most attended Emeritus Classes that Questa offers from what they have let us know. Let me see. As far as exercise classes, we'd like to bring back our tai chi, paces, our 39-plus dance, the life drawing, bingo, quilting. And then the events that we missed out again are the open house, the annual open house, and annual wellness fair. Moving to aquatics, we're looking to be full-service once again and move towards providing semi-private and private lessons as well as group lessons. We are also real excited about our Morro Bay High School Career Technical Education classes. So we're teaching a class in lifeguarding, which is helping these kids move down a path of, a safety path is what they're referring it to. But really, it's self-serving because from that, we'll be able to hire on new lifeguards, which is a difficult thing in this time and for this county. Just on a side note, the county did not open up their, their six or seven swimming pools this year, partly due to COVID and partly due to a lack of staffing. So we're very fortunate to be able to have the high school here and use the kids there and be able to work them. Let's see. As far as administration, we're moving forward now to permit city property and provide activity classes again. As far as the permitting, I'm talking about film permits, which we've done four of them in the last couple of weeks. We're looking at bringing back the surf contests, avocado margarita festival, harbor festival, et cetera. And then as far as our activity classes, we offer zumba, dog obedience, karate, dance, quilting, things of that nature. To be determined still, our city events, and I did speak to those events, or excuse me, the city events, I'm talking Halloween or holiday tree lighting program, maybe our Mermaid Pirate Parade next year. So looking forward to bringing those back and providing the service to the community. And then also here within the office, we're looking to rebuild some of the office operations, creating some SOPs, working further on some grants and partnerships and moving forward with the new registration system. So there's a lot going on as far as the office is concerned and the programs that we're able to provide and offer to the, to the community. That's really what I had. I tried to speak really quick so you guys could move along because I know you have a busy meeting. I do have some pictures here, and please remember, or please note, these are pre-COVID pictures. So you won't see any masks right now, but they look like a lot of fun. But I'm happy, oh, I did have a closing, what I wanted to say in closing, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. But I did want to say that your Recreation Services team is a group of dedicated and caring professionals who give of themselves and are passionate with what they do. From day one of this pandemic, they put themselves on the front line to serve our community, and that's from our lifeguard team to our youth services team, who a majority are high school students. And I'm proud to say, I'm part of their team and honored to work side by side with each and every one of them. I have a fantastic staff here, and we're very fortunate to have them. Thank you for your time. I hope I didn't ramble through that too quickly, and I'm happy to answer any of the questions that you might have.
Hey Kirk, thanks so much for your report. If there's one thing that I constantly hear from the community about bringing back, that is, when are the recreation programs going to open up again? You've done a tremendous job with a limited resource or two through COVID-19, and we certainly appreciate all of your work and everything that you've done to hold things together. We're especially proud of the emergency childcare services that your staff provided in a time of need for many folks. They were there, frontline and center. I consider them as important as healthcare workers. In the midst of the pandemic, when things were tough, they were there, and I just want to extend my thanks to not only you, but your staff, and look forward to the future and getting back to not a new normal, but normal. So let me open it up and ask if there are any questions on the part of council. Any questions for Kirk?
I don't have a question, but I would like to echo the sentiment that the mayor expressed, and our family has certainly benefited from Rec and Park Services, but also I saw how hard people worked with the Morro Bay Cares Program and how hard it has been across COVID and how much work has been done to serve our community. And I can also say that on the childcare front, some of the data that I saw said that very few families in Morro Bay lack childcare to a point where it's really a big problem, and I attribute that to the good work of our Rec and Park Department, and I really want to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could chime in here?
Absolutely.
Yeah, Kirk, it seems that no matter how much we give you or take away from you, you just do a remarkable job. And, you know, I agree, the emergency childcare was just a bright light, and you just do a great job. And I, and I look forward to getting your programs reinstated as we get a little more fiscally strong, and your leadership is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. Any other comments or questions? If not, thanks again, Kirk. We appreciate you, and thanks again for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with that, we will go, go ahead and move to public comment. This is general public comment for items that are on the agenda for which you cannot stay and address at the time the agenda item appears, or anything in general that you would like to raise regarding the city. Again, this is general public comment, and I'll go ahead and point out that on the screen are two options. You can either click on the link and join us via the Zoom link. Be sure to use the raise hand feature, or you can call in on the phone number provided on the screen. Be sure to use the star nine to raise your hand and be recognized for public comment. So with that, I'll go ahead and open general public comment. Anthony, please, sir. Any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I do see a hand raised. Betty Winholz.
Welcome, Betty.
Okay, Betty, I have unmuted you. Go ahead.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. This is Betty Winholz. I have a few topics I'd like to cover in the three minutes here. The first is the acknowledgement of Arbor Day on the city website. I appreciate that, but at the same time, want to note that there is no notice still to the public that now is not the time to cut private trees and that it's birding season. And it seems to me that could have and should have been part of the Arbor Day presentation on the website and/or should be there separate from Arbor Day, and would still encourage that that appear on the website if you're not going to put it out in the water bills. Second, I read an article, and I think this is pertinent to our sewer system, that says a number of sewer plants have been overcome because of throwaway wipes. And it seems to me that's, again, another public service item that we need to get out to the public, that those kinds of things that are supposedly dissolvable in the toilet should not be put there. They should be in the trash can, and that's those disposable wipes that many people have used since COVID. A third topic I'd like to address is the community assignments. And to the public committees, I know that you've had some hard time filling some of those, and at the same time, I think you've had some people apply and that you have turned them down. And my question there would be, as a member of the community, it's my understanding that basically anyone who lives here and is a resident, if not a registered voter, is eligible to be on the committee and should be appointed regardless, particularly if there's an opening. And it should not be based on political stance, and by political, I mean for or against the current sway of the city council, but that you need more diversity on, on your committees. And that could be why people are hesitant to apply. And then my final comment is with regard to the building of the sewer plant, particularly the pipelines on Quintana, that two weeks ago, I asked what was the update on what was going on, and was told by staff that things are moving along just fine. And that was like around the 13th, and yet on the 7th, there was, as reported in the newspaper, an rupture in both the water supply and in a sewer pipe on Quintana. And yet those were not reported to the public. They were not reported until it was reported to a newspaper. So I would encourage you to be more transparent with what is going on with this project so that the public can try to trust the process more. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, Mayor. I see Joan Sulu or Solu.
Okay. Welcome, Joan.
Okay, Joan, I have unmuted you.
Welcome, Joan.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and council. Thank you for taking my comment tonight. And thank you for doing everything you do for our community, especially during this difficult time. That includes staff. We're grateful to you. I'd like to speak to you regarding C1, the public meeting to receive public testimony on the reformation of the Morro Bay Tourism and Business Improvement District and the lobby of the assessment. And I'd just like to thank the city manager for all of his hard work in bringing this forward. The plan to form a tourism business improvement district and have it be five, a five-year freestanding 501(c) does not come around for the first time tonight. This process has been long, somewhat tumultuous over the years, but now we are a good, fine-working group of people, with a good, fine-working group of folks within the city, staff and council, that see the vision of moving tourism forward in our community. It is the number one most important, currently the number one most important economic driver for our community, and it has been for some time. So having a strong marketing arm for that economic support is very, very important. I sit as a resident, your resident representative on your TBIT Advisory Board. Although I am not speaking on behalf of the board here tonight, I want to let you know that as a resident, I am in full support of moving this process forward and forming a nonprofit 501(c) as a five-year contract with our beautiful community, moving it forward for a sustainable tourism marketing effort. So I appreciate you hearing that tonight, and I appreciate the work of the consultant, Michael Wamboldt. He has gone out and he has done due diligence and multiple points of contact to get in touch with all of the lodging owners who might be assessed. He's done a beautiful job of getting well, well, well beyond the 50% plus $1 threshold. And he's, he is very dynamic at helping people to understand what the benefit is, not only to our community, but to them as individual business owners. So again, I just appreciate you hearing this tonight. I appreciate all the work the city staff has done on it and that Mr. Wamboldt and the tourism staff has done on it. And I just thank you very much. So have a good evening and have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Joan. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, Mayor. I see Michael Martz with his hand up. Okay, Michael, I have unmuted you.
Welcome, Michael.
Michael Martz, are you there?
Okay, can you hear?
Yes, we can.
Welcome, Michael.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. I am speaking about the general plan update that is on the agenda. And I'm speaking on behalf of the owners of the Shepherd property, which I am an owner. We have, have that parcel of land that wraps around the Retirement Center up by the water, wastewater treatment plant that's being constructed. And we've been in discussions with the city for about three years now on that property with the easement. We reached agreement with the city back in August of 2020, and part of that agreement included the city's commitment that they would work with us on rezoning of the property as part of the general plan. Back in November of 2020, we started pressing the city to get that process started, and we were told that the general plan update was just about done and that we were just, it was too late to get involved, and it was just going to be done in a couple of months. It wasn't done, and in January, we submitted another letter and request that we be considered for inclusion in that general plan amendment. We were again told that it was just moments away from being approved, and there just simply wasn't time to include us. Now we're almost in May. The plan is still not done. And we are again asking that the city reconsider and include us in the rezone. The, the city conducted a housing element and the plan Morro Bay, which identified our property years ago with a higher density than it currently has. So they obviously have this in their sights. We, based on the current zoning, can only put about 20 houses on it. And if we upzone it, we could probably get about 65 multifamily units would be, which would be a much more ideal product for the citizens of Morro Bay than, you know, high-priced single-family homes. So again, we're just, I guess, asking that the city be a little more forward-thinking and trying to solve the housing crisis that Morro Bay faces and reconsider getting us involved in this current process. Otherwise, our alternative is to just continue with developing single-family homes. So I appreciate your time and hope you'll continue to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, thank you so much. With that, I will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council, and just ask staff if we could update our website with regard to Ms. Winholz's statements about not cutting private trees. Perhaps that's a consideration that you could look into. And the throwaway wipe issue, perhaps some, some community education also. That is an important issue, and with the proliferation of those products now, could be a potential problem. So, and also, if we could get routine pipeline updates on our website regarding the WRF project, that would be very much appreciated. Thank you. With that, I will move us to item A on the agenda. This is the consent agenda. I'll go ahead and open up public comment for items on the consent agenda only. If you'd like to speak regarding any item on the consent agenda, A1 through A4, please do so now. Public comment is open. So Anthony, any public comment for consent?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Give it just a couple of seconds to be sure.
Yep.
Okay, if you have no public comment, I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council, and ask if there are any items to be pulled. Hearing done, I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda items.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Addis to approve items A1 through A4. Second by Councilmember Barton. Any further discussion? If not, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes.
Thank you for that. And that brings us to item B. This is our public hearing for the evening. This is a public hearing for consideration of Plan Morro Bay, General Plan, Local Coastal Plan Program Update, and the final environmental impact report and related documents, and to provide direction to staff as deemed appropriate. This item B1 that you now have before you is the culmination of over almost six years of work by our community development program team, as well as a broad range of individuals in our community that have been involved in crafting the update of a plan that is over 20 years old, including the former General Plan Advisory Committee. And I just want to offer my thanks again to all of our community members that participated in the GPEC and provided information early on with regard to this. I wanted to thank our planning commissioners and planning commission over the years, especially recently, for their extensive review of the General Plan, Local Coastal Plan, and the updates associated with that. I want to thank council for your prior involvement over the years. Especially, I want to thank former Mayor Irons for his leadership in bringing this forward to council in the past to begin the conversation about the update of this most important document. There have been multiple public workshops, as you know, many focus group meetings, the development of the Visioning and Values Statement, dozens of General Plan Advisory Committee meetings. As I mentioned, many planning commission meetings, city council meetings, as well as a large number of community stakeholder interviews, including both online and mailed surveys that were sent via the Water Bill, and multiple in-person meetings when we were able to do that, and phone conferences, especially with the California Coastal Commission with regard to their review and input on this important document. And so, I upfront, want to just thank greatly all of the community members who are involved in this. But also, I'm so grateful to our staff under the leadership of Mr. Graham, who is our Community Development Director, for bringing this item to us tonight. And so, with that, Mr. Graham, this will be a public hearing, council. We will start with the staff report, followed by council questions. And then, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing, ask for public comment. And this item most likely will be continued over a series of meetings to make sure that we have appropriate time for council questions, input on this extremely important plan for our community. And so, at the end of all of that, I will close public comment, close the public hearing. And then, we will move forward with recommendations that will come at a future meeting. So with that, let me go ahead and ask Mr. Graham if you're ready to go, sir. Welcome and good evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Heading, members of council. It's a significant amount of pleasure I get to bring this forward to you finally, the culmination of six-plus years of work on Plan Morro Bay, the city's general plan, local coastal program update, and final environmental impact report. I think we started this process in 2014, 2015, when we started with the, doing the plan for the plan that eventually turned into overall Plan Morro Bay. You have myself here this evening. You have Cindy Jason, our senior planner, and Amy Sinheimer with Placeworks, who is the consultant responsible for putting the document together. We do have a brief presentation for you. I am going to share that presentation with you in a second. And Cindy, we'll start off with a brief overview, and then we'll get into a little more of the meat of it. And then, we'll turn it over to the council for discussion and questions. So with that, I will share my screen. There you go. And I'll turn it over to you, Cindy, to start.
Okay, well, thank you and good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, as well as community members. It is, I echo what Scott has said. It is really a pleasure to be bringing forward this document. This represents an update of the city's 1988 general plan and 1984 local coastal program. These are two separate documents. The total, 1,100 pages. It is being combined to under 400 pages. So that, it's been a lot of work by the community over the last few years. The slides here before you show that, it is an integrated general plan and LCP land use plan. And because of the complexity of the document, we, staff also created a comparison chart. And that really is intended to show how the various elements of the general plan and the chapters of the LCP have been updated or changed. A link for that was included in the staff report. In 2018, after extensive public outreach, as Mayor Heading indicated, multiple public workshops, focus group meetings, Visioning and Values Statement exercise, dozens of GPEC meetings, planning commission meetings, and prior joint planning commission, city council meetings, that all informed the policy development of this document. And that culminated in a draft of the, excuse me, a public draft of the general plan. The planning commission held five public hearings on that document. It went through some revisions. And that came back as an adoption draft. And that was reviewed by the planning commission in 2020, starting in October. And it was on March 16th, the planning commission forwarded a favorable recommendation to the city council for consideration, review, and adoption of that. And if I could have you go to the next slide, Scott. Because of the extensive outreach and just really the, you know, making sure that all of the parts were covered, staff put together comment summaries. And that reflects the edits and responses we received throughout the project. We've included links in the staff report. And that shows the public comments that we've gotten. It also includes general plan advisory committee comments, planning commission comments. And we also created a separate spreadsheet for coastal commission comment. Because important to the process was really coordinating with coastal commission upfront in order to streamline the process. Since the public hearings on the document, we did get additional public correspondence received. The coastal commission provided a support letter. They have reviewed the document, as I've said, since the beginning. But they did provide a support letter. And that was included as an attachment to the staff report. And they wholeheartedly support the document. We did also get a comment letter from the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee. And in the next several slides, staff will talk about that because that actually came after the planning commission's favorable recommendation. So with that, I'm going to transition back over to Scott, and he'll take over the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Cindy. So as Cindy stated, we did receive a fairly lengthy letter from the Government Affairs Committee of the Chamber of Commerce. It is attached to your staff report as an exhibit. They, I distilled it down to about 10 points. Normally, you know, when we're bringing forward a general plan, we're bringing forward simply the recommendation that comes from your planning commission. But given that this input came after the planning commission completed its review, I thought it pertinent that staff at least take a look at, you know, what they provided in their, in their letter. And then tried to kind of pull out, you know, a few items that the city council could, you know, consider possibly making changes to. Certainly, it's, the council can consider any of the items that were raised in the, you know, in the letter. These are just the 10, the top 10 that I thought could be more easily incorporated into the document or easily incorporated into the document. The first one deals with a request to develop prototypical plans for the infill and transition areas in the downtown. Also speaks to looking at the overlay at the power plant sites for residential mixed use and potentially removing that. In sort of, you know, looking through what the impacts of that, what that would be to Plan Morro Bay, I think we could, you know, add some more specific language in the implementation actions in the document that could speak to developing these types of prototypical plans for the downtown area, if that was desired by council. We do have implementation items that require development of design guidelines for our various commercial areas. So could be incorporated into that as well. Again, they do suggest the removal of the residential mixed-use overlay on the power plant sites because of some of the limitations on the site. But that's not something that was ever reviewed by the planning commission, general plan advisory committee, or planning commission. And the restrictions that are on the site through the Department of Toxic Substance Control and through private restrictions related to the uses that could be out on the site that are part of an agreement with PG&E. Those documents, you know, those restrictions could be removed through negotiation with those entities, meaning PG&E and DTSC. And it's my understanding that the districts had those conversations with those entities about what it would take to do those, those types of things. The second item that the GAC raised, and that was a request to revise this regulation element to more adequately reflect multimodal access. Specifically, they were asking us to look at figures CR1A, 1B, and 4, to look at, you know, the full multimodal, meaning vehicular, pedestrian, bicycle, emergency access. They did also propose in that document some revised maps and things that could be added. In looking at some of the maps, I had concerns that they showed access points across Morro Creek in areas where there was substantial environmentally sensitive habitat, where ESHA. So would not suggest that we incorporate those lines into it. I think it's probably better to incorporate language in the document that says, "We'll look at those types of things." Possibly in relationship to the required master plan that is supposed to take place for redevelopment of the power plant site and/or redevelopment of the city's existing or current wastewater treatment plant that sits over off Patascadero Road. Third item was suggested that we include specifically an enhanced infrastructure financing district as a methodology to pay for public improvements in this area. We do have an implementation action, CIR4, in the document that speaks to pursuing various financing methods to perform public improvements. We could be more specific and say, "And specifically, look at EIFD's" if the council was interested in that. Item four, requested that the Harbor Walk be included in the circulation implementation action, CIR9. We could add that the Harbor Walk, it is not specifically called out in the circulation elements as a pedestrian improvement. So we certainly could do that. GAC was also requesting that we establish a level of service for all, for all modes of transit. We do have policy, CIR 3.1, that speaks to an implementation action, CIR15, that says that the methods we're going to use for evaluating traffic impacts are level of service for our intersections, as well as vehicles, vehicle miles traveled. So we have those items already in the document. We could add some more specificity there as it relates to looking at it for pedestrian purposes, if the council is so inclined. The sixth item, talked about including a level of service for pedestrian facilities on the Harbor Walk. Seven, there's a request. Let's see here, hold on a second here. The small portions of the power plant property or adjacent properties should be designated for visitors serving commercial only to the scale that it's needed to sustain community through 2040 with a balance of the property held in reserve or allowed to develop other uses, including energy production, storage, and transmission. You know, the land use component of this was well-vetted. I mean, that went through multiple city workshops, multiple general plan advisory committee meetings, planning commission meetings, city council meetings. City council gave the final thumbs up to move forward with the land use pattern that you see out there now on the maps. So that would be a deviation from that. If we were to make that specific change, would also probably require us to pause now and go back to our traffic engineer, rerun the traffic models. That would also probably result in changes that would be necessary in the environmental impact report. So that, that specific change would potentially delay the project further. I think the preference here would be that we incorporate this sort of review into the master planning process that's also required in the documents for redevelopment of the power plant site and redevelopment of the city's wastewater treatment plant site. So that is something for consideration by the, by the council. Item eight was looking at inclusion of the triangle parking lots as a visitor-serving commercial use. Again, same issue as number seven. This is not something that was vetted through any of the public process that we've had to this point. And probably a bigger issue here is, there's a lot of competing uses there. Certainly, we have the boat storage there now. We have RV camping, you know, identified in that location. We have the Maritime Museum looking to extend, you know, or expand into that space. So I think a much larger, you know, public discussion probably needs to take place before we can make that decision. I would say the solution again is maybe we could include this in any sort of master planning process for the sites, and we could at least have that public discussion. Moving on to item nine, suggested portions of the property north of the main entrance of the power plants, the building which is where they're proposing the battery project now. Should be changed, the land use designations for energy storage or energy transmission. Yes, we have an application in for that use. But that is, you know, that application, you know, may or may not move forward, may or may not be approved. But all of the land use decision-making process, all of the public process that's taken place as it relates to identifying land uses on the site, identify the land use, the desired land uses visitor-serving commercial in the draft document. So would not recommend making that change either. But again, could be something that we look at as part of a, you know, a larger master planning process. And then lastly, we talked about the city preparing a master, our specific plan for the waterfront area, but with distilled down, design regulations that are in multiple documents and that type of thing, and have them in one place. It's not a bad idea. We have a waterfront master plan. We have an implementation action that has us updating that. Certainly, we wanted to be specific about, you know, incorporating design elements from some of the other plans, like the downtown and waterfront Gigi Plan. We could, you know, coalesce those into that document, be specific about that, if that's the desire. We also have implementation actions in the document that have us doing, again, comprehensive design guidelines for the different commercial areas in town. I think that's how to complete my sort of discussion related to GAC comments and sort of discuss further as council plays in. So the review tonight, I think Mayor Heading alluded to this. But we're sort of looking at breaking this up into two-hour chunks over pre-meeting. So this evening, at your next meeting on May 11th and on May 25th. At your next meeting on the 11th, we also plan on bringing Rincon, four word views, our consultants that prepared the final environmental impact report. And they will provide a presentation on the EIR, final EIR, at that meeting for your consideration and discussion. And then, we would potentially move forward and continue review after the presentation and maybe by council, EIR with the review of Plan Morro Bay. This is the organization, so like basically the table of contents for the documents. The idea would be this evening that you start review of the blueprints, introduction and vision sections. Blueprints includes the induction, gives the land use element, which is basically like identifies all of the uses that we have in the city, commercial, residential, the intensity of those commercial and residential uses. And basically, we also have a land use map, so a colored map, not unlike the zoning map, but is the land use map for the GLCP. but is the land use map for the GLCP. Community design elements, where we look at, you know, what the city can look like or should look like in the future. The economic development elements, which is really, you know, looks at the promotion and sustainability of our economy, making sure that our economy is resilient moving forward, and looks at, you know, what opportunities we have for growth. We're wrapping up with the circulation elements, which goes about circulation patterns, looks at the function of our intersections in town and do they need improvements, kind of like Highway 1 and 41, you know, the roundabout that's going in there, kind of looks at, you know, impacts related to circulation pattern in our streets and how they function in the city and what they would look like at build-out. The noise elements, which looks at noise generating uses, looks at, you know, what those areas in town where noise generated, like Highway 1, and what development has to do adjacent to that and what you have to look at and related to impacts from noise and how you mitigate that. Then you have the housing element, which the city council adopted in fact in August of 2020. It will be wrapped into this document when we are done. It is not part of your review this evening. Then we have, we move into the green print, which will be maybe starting review on, on that May 11 meeting. It includes the conservation element, which looks at, you know, all of our, you know, the bay, the estuary, geology, natural features of the area, and speaks to the benefits associated with preservation and enhancement of those resources. You have the open space elements, which includes our parks, the coastline, the beach, the waterfront, and helps us define and preserve our natural areas in town. The public safety element, which addresses hazards in the city, also is where we find impacts and how we address impacts and climate change, and it also speaks to standard emergency response, you know, from police, fire, those types of things. Then we have our, our mental justice elements, which really addresses livability in the community, you know, addresses that livability for people of all age, race, ability, socioeconomic backgrounds, those types of things. The implementation section, the document has implementation items under each element, and then we also have them coalesced in a final table at the back of the document, and then you also have a glossary, and then you have the appendices for the document. Well, the recommendation once council completes its review would be for certification of the environmental impact report, adoption of Plan Moro Bay, which is general plan, local coastal program, and then we would be forwarding on that document to the coastal commission for certification, or at least those portions of it that are part of the local coastal program. With that, that ends our presentation, and we would be happy to take any comments or questions.
Okay, and Scott, did you, were we going to have anything on the screen with regard to specific areas of review, or you just want general questions now?
I think it's general questions. I think, you know, we follow, we're going to review the blueprint tonight. It really would be by those sections, and I think it would be appropriate for, for you to sort of lead that discussion insofar as, okay, this is the section we're talking about now, and then we'll take specific comments related to that. If there's general comments from the council, I'd certainly be happy to take those as well. I know we received, received a lot of correspondence, you know, recently, so I'm sure there's council interest in discussing some of that as well, so it might be good to get some of those out of the way at the beginning perhaps.
Okay, so council, I'll go ahead and open it up for maybe general comments first, and then we'll go section by section as outlined in the organization on page 363 for each of the elements there. So let's open it up for general comments or input, not input, but excuse me, general questions for staff, I apologize. So this is questions. Let's go ahead and start with council member Heller, sir.
I'm here, I'm just clicking everything so that it...
Get clicked in, huh?
Took me a little long to click.
No worries.
To Scott and your department, a tremendous amount of work and the community outreach in this, when you think about six years, is just remarkable, and between the planning commission, all the outreach that you've done, it's just a remarkable effort on your part, and I want to congratulate you for getting us to this point. For some people, it's too fast, for other people, it's not fast enough, but I don't know how you handle your workload while you're doing this, but you've done a great job getting us to this point. I have a few general questions in reviewing it. I see the way you structured it is you have, with each element, you have goals, policies, and implementation actions for each element. Have these different components been prioritized in any way, or maybe you can just answer that for me?
Well, there, the format and the, and the order that they're in was the, it came out of the process of the, it came out of the review process that was, we had several, you look in the appendices for the document, we had several background documents that were put together that identified issues in the city, gave a sort of overall look at what the city looked like at a, at a, at a point in time, you know, and then was funneled through the general plan advisory committee to identify what those goals would be. And so we did sort of prioritize them in that way in that they were reviewed through our general plan advisory committee coming forward.
Okay, so they basically are in a top to bottom priority sequence, okay. The implementation actions have funding sources listed for each of them. At any point in time, have you looked at this and tried to plug numbers in there, or do you have any idea what, if we wanted to implement all these things in the next 20 years, what, what that would cost, or even, even to process all those actions?
That is a fantastic question. I haven't applied numbers to all of the things there to see what it would cost to implement everything, and I've not done that. You know, a lot of it, you know, a lot of the, the funding sources are, you know, that we look toward for, for implementation, you know, are going to be either general fund items or things that we go after grants for. So a lot of it, you know, somewhat going to be predicated on the grant funding that's available to do some of that implementation and that, and/or, you know, general funds that are available to pull them off, but we haven't done an analysis of what the overall cost would be though.
And then probably that would not be a typical part of a general plan anyway, is that fair to say?
I would be honest with you, I don't know how useful it would be, because I'm sure, you know, all, there's a lot of implementation items. If you look at the table, there's, there's many of them, and the best we could do would be a ballpark, and I'm sure as you got through to the end of the document, we would have been, by the time you get 20 years out, very wrong in what the number was. So I'm not sure exactly even how useful it would necessarily be.
Okay, so we have other master plans that have been developed over the years. Has this document been fully coordinated with them and support those?
It is, it recognizes them. It's, where we're keeping them, it recognizes them and recognizes that they're there. In some instances, it has us incorporating or folding policies into and directs them into maybe the zoning code as opposed to having standalone documents, maybe like for the beach street specific plan area as an example. But yes, I mean, all of those items were taken into consideration as part of the review and, and the sort of assembling of the document, yes.
Okay, and then there've been some comments that the general plan is too specific. What are your, what are your thoughts about that?
Doesn't seem, it seems like a general plan. It, it has general policies in there, it has some things that are more specific. You'll see more specific items often related to the portion of the document that, that is the local coastal program, because that deals with coastal resource issues. So oftentimes, you have more pointed or specific language there that comes out of the coastal act, or comes out of, you know, policy that's, that was developed, you know, through the coastal commission. So we have some things there that are fairly specific as far as preservation and enhancement for environmentally sensitive habitat, for how far you have to set back from those things, for preservation of affordable accommodation, those types of things, things that are coastal act priorities. You see more specific items related to that, because again, it's, it's how we implement the California coastal act.
Okay, and then, I am not a planner, as you know. Most people listening are probably not planners. As we go forward through these elements, are you going to be able to specifically answer the questions raised by the Chamber of Commerce and the recently formed the Barcadero Master Leaseholders Group and other questions that the public may have about each of the elements?
Yes, we'll, we'll certainly do our best to answer the questions as they come up, absolutely. So myself, Cindy, and Amy are available to answer those questions, yes.
Okay, great, those are my questions. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Scott, and team.
Thank you, council member Heller. Let's go to council member Addis, please, questions?
I just have a couple, and I want to say thank you to Scott for all the work that you've done, but also the tremendous list of participants there at the beginning of the plan. I think the acknowledgements there really speak to how much time and energy and effort has gone into this plan. But Scott, can you talk a little bit more about the importance of the letter from the coastal commission? Is it typical to get a letter from them at this point in the process, and, you know, what would happen if we were to change it too much, those kinds of things?
So the, you know, the, the letter from the coastal commission, I'm sure you read it, it was very complimentary of the city and its efforts. You know, about half of this effort was funded through grants, either through the Ocean Protection Council or through the coastal commission, and there were a lot of deliverables that came out of that, meaning we had to work closely with coastal commission staff, you know, to develop policies that were respectful of the California coastal act. And in, and in doing that, we, you know, and a lot of it was tied to, you know, resiliency, climate adaptation, those types of things. And so because we did work with them so closely, you know, they, the documents where they want it to be, they like the policy language that we have in there, they like it as examples to use for other communities, they spend a lot of time with us. We painstakingly, painstakingly went through the document, which is why they sent a letter saying, you know, we support the project, we support what you have in front of you, you know, and I had a call last week, literally with Kevin Kahn, who's the coastal planner that sent the letter, that said they're basically ready to take it forward to the coastal commission for certification as it is today. Now certainly, you know, if we make some changes to some of the coastal act, you know, hot button issues in the document, then that certainly could delay the process a little bit. If you made wholesale changes, then that would probably be a greater delay.
And what, what do we risk if we make some changes and cause delay?
Well, I mean, we have, we have deliverables of the entire documents, we have timeframes on those that are the subject of the grants, and so, I mean, if there were significant delays and we were ended at the loggerheads, meaning we couldn't move forward, they could potentially, you know, ask for their money back, because we wouldn't have given them the document that we said we were going to give them. If we're working with them, it would just be the time involved, and, you know, we would have to hash it out at the end. You know, at some point, it ends up in front of the, the California coastal commission, and, you know, they can make changes to it, and they give it back to us, and then the council would have to decide whether you accepted those changes or not. As an example, if we took out the 25% affordable accommodation, you know, number of units down on the waterfront, it seems to be a fairly hot button topic, I could see the commission adding it back in, and then the council would have to decide what you wanted to do with that.
Thank you, not good for me.
Thank you, council member Addis. Let's go to council member Barton, please, questions?
Yes, my questions are similar to Dawn's, and it was interesting hearing Scott's response. Many, many people have been involved in this over the years, and we have some people who were not involved earlier on, who have made some good suggestions, so I would like to think that we could look at some of those suggestions and perhaps incorporate them.
Certainly the prerogative of council.
Okay, we, so we have several more meetings to address this, this overall plan, and that's, I would hope that we could look at incorporating some of those, some of those comments, so that's my, my pitch to other council members to, to look at doing that.
So thank you, council member Barton. I will be going section by section, hopefully just as a matter of prep, suggest that you have a copy of the most recent Plan Moro Bay in front of you. That would be the time for us to perhaps have discussion, give input on each of those areas, and so I'm just starting with general overview, and thank you for that, I appreciate it. I'll go to council member Davis, please, sir, general questions?
Yes, thank you. And just so I don't forget later on, I want to disclose that I have had ex parte meetings with the Embarcadero Master Lease Group in company with the mayor at a Zoom meeting, and also an ex parte teleconference with Erica Crawford of the chamber. My question, my general question has to do with amending the plan, because we've heard a couple of requests tonight, one about the battery storage. The power plant is not zoned for that project. Also, the Shepherd property, there's a request that, already that we amend the general plan to change the density of that problem. How did the amendment process work, Scott?
So, yeah, so you would have, they would come forward with an application, and we have applications for amendments to our general plan, local coastal program, and zoning code. They would submit those applications along with all the supporting materials, and they would go through our review process, they would go through planning commission for recommendation to city council, and the city council, and then once council was done with it, those amendments would go off for certification to the coastal commission. As far as, you know, that's how it would work for the power plant property. We have had ongoing discussions with coastal staff about the current zoning that's out there, which is coastal dependent industrial, and whether the battery project is consistent with that, you know, all the way up into whether the battery project is consistent with, you know, the proposed visitor serving commercial land use and zoning, you know, and so we anticipate getting a, a written response back from them here, you know, probably, hopefully this week. So I did speak with Kevin Kahn last week, and they said they'd be getting us something soon. But my feeling, you know, from that conversation was that they didn't think it was consistent with the current zoning, and certainly, you know, it's not included in the, in the proposed land use and zoning, so if there's a desire on the council to do something with that, we would probably have to identify a battery storage project isn't allowed use there, or they would have to include that in their application that's currently pending in the planning division.
So is it, is it a rather simple thing to amend the plan?
It's pretty straightforward. They would need to just, I mean, they tell us what they want, we put it, and they process the application, pay the fee, and, and goes along with potentially their project if they have a project. Like the Shepherd March property, we've had long, ongoing conversations with them about submitting an application in concert with the 10-lot subdivision that sits up there to change the land use to allow a higher density residential in that location, and they've chosen not to submit that application, and in fact, we just recently received the application for the 10-lot subdivision to increase the density in that location, so that's a land use change that's in-house right now.
All right, and then we have also heard from various groups that there is a difference between coastal commission staff and coastal commission members, and that just because the staff says, tells us to do something, doesn't necessarily mean that if we do something different, that the actual commission would not support us. Can, can you give us any kind of thoughts about that?
Well, that's sort of the case. The commission, not unlike the city council, is the one that makes the decision. Staff doesn't make the decision, staff makes recommendations. So, you know, there is, there is, there is room there for changes to be made. I think the, the changes that you make in core coastal commission issue areas are the ones that are likely to generate the most pushback on that side. It's not to mean that, meaning if we submitted something and... It's not to mean that, meaning if we submitted something, and I'm going to just go back to the example that I said earlier, is you have to have 25% of the hotel units on the waterfront as affordable, which seems to be, again, one of the hot button topics. And were you to remove that, you know, I would, we would need to make a very solid argument to the coastal as to why we didn't think it was necessary. And really, that would be made at the meeting where they were looking to certify the document. And I would almost guarantee that the report that came out of staff would not support that. And in this instance, you know, coastal has some fairly salient reasons. I mean, they looked at the waterfront, they looked at other hotel, you know, operations in the city and said, "Okay, well, you have, you know, a smattering of different level of room rates throughout the city, but down on the waterfront, you don't really have any affordable rooms on the waterfront. So this is where you need to have them." And that was sort of their positioning. Now, whether it could be less than 25%, it could be 10 or 15, you know, I mean, that's certainly, you know, a topic open for discussion for the council.
So it's a dice roll.
It is, and I think, you know, if you're trying to get into areas where, like, we're talking about eelgrass in the bay, we want to be able to cover up eelgrass with our harbor lock, I mean, those are areas that aren't going to get much traction, you know, if you're trying to make those changes. It just sort of depends on, you know, what areas you're dealing with and what kind of coastal issues you're dealing with. If there are, you know, things that don't have any real bearing on the Coastal Commission, and they don't care about them, then it's certainly much easier.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Mayor, could I ask one more question?
You absolutely may.
Scott, on the low-cost accommodation, is it a must, a shall, a should? I mean, how didactic would you consider a master plan? Is it a have to, or is there some wiggle room when you create a long-term vision like this?
So, this will maybe give you a little bit of context. So we had a lot of other visitor-serving accommodation policies in the document, and we've had numerous conversations with coastal staff, and they felt they were going to be getting some direction out of the commission itself, because I think there's a couple of other communities that have visitor-serving accommodation policies that are going to be going before the commission here in the next few months. And they were thinking they were going to get some direction out of that. So they suggested that we strip some of that language out of the current general plan and put it into our zoning code, excuse me, which is the implementation plan for the local coastal program. And the one thing they didn't want to remove was this 25% of the waterfront hotel units be affordable, you know, be an affordable visitor-serving accommodation. So they were more adamant as it related to those because they found those to be unique. Now, can we make arguments to the contrary to the commission itself? Certainly, we can. We had, the Coastal Commission staff themselves, when we told them we had a lot of affordable rooms in town, didn't believe us until we gave them the study. And then we showed it to them, and, you know, I've said this to a couple of other people, they looked at us like we were the unicorn, you know. I mean, we were different than most other coastal cities. We had a lot of affordable accommodations in town. So they did recognize that we were unique after we did the math, so to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You are quite welcome. Oops, looking for my camera. There it is. I'm back. Scott, just one, a general question. And I very much appreciate the extensive document that was submitted by the Chamber of Commerce. And you, in your packet, gave us some specific information that addressed some of the issues that the Government Affairs Committee had raised with regard to changes in the plan, and I appreciate that. My question is, I noted that, and this is, I mean no disrespect to the Chamber, but that their comments were received, if I'm remembering or looking correctly, by staff on March 22nd. And as I recall, the Planning Commission, after extensive review, completed their review and final comments on 316. Is that correct, first of all?
That sounds, that sounds correct, yes. When the Planning Commission completed it, we either got it on the 21st or the 22nd from the, I think I got one document one day, and then the whole document, maybe the next day, from Erica Crawford, so.
Got it. And again, I'm not trying to be critical at all of the Chamber and/or their inputs, because I consider them very important, but they're very detailed, and in my mind, should have or could have been vetted by the Planning Commission, and/or it would be most appropriate to vet those by the Planning Commission. Is that correct prior to getting to council? I'm just asking a general question.
I would say so. The Chamber provided comments previously in the process, and those were vetted by the Planning Commission. You know, certainly, you know, it would have been preferred that we had the input, you know, I think maybe there was timing issues related to the group forming and taking a look at everything, but it would have been preferred that we filtered this through your Planning Commission at a minimum, right? Because it was a lengthy document that had a lot of input in it. Certainly, they spent time on it, for sure. And so you're not getting the benefit of, you know, that review. You know, and you sort of have to review it in your light, which the council is certainly capable of doing. And, you know, I just, you know, I did my best. And we answered, like, all of the comments they had in the comment sheets, in the spreadsheets, to the best of our ability. And then brought forward the ones that we thought that were fairly easy to implement. That was kind of the concept on staff's side for reviewing it, and trying to assist the council on your review, because that was a fairly lengthy document that they provided.
And could you outline for us the time horizon? Should council say, "We'd like these items to be reviewed by the Planning Commission"? What would that involve, and what kind of delays would be incurred in terms of the implementation of the plan?
So, let me pull my calendar up here. About the soonest we could get this on the Planning Commission's agenda would be the second meeting in May, which is the 18th. So that would be, you know, so we'd give it to them then. We'd have the review then. It might take more than one meeting, given that we have some folks, we have new Planning Commissioners, right, and we're missing one Planning Commissioner, so we have only four. So it might take some time for folks to come up to speed on some of this. So I could foresee it to being at least a two-meeting review. So we'd be looking at pushing that into June and then bringing that review back to council with the recommendation, which is what I think you're asking me. And so, and I think you've canceled meetings in July, so August is my thumbnail idea, I guess, about where we'd end up, yeah, I think.
Okay, just wanted to get an idea of process should that recommendation be made. I just wanted to understand the delay and the time horizon for that. And then the other question I have on the inputs by the folks that are from the leaseholder group on the Embarcadero. There are a number of policy recommendations in their document where they point to the fact that, quote unquote, and I'll just read it, "This policy does not apply to the Embarcadero waterfront from Tidylit's Park", excuse me, to Tidylit, to Target Rock, and that is a consistent comment. Is that true or not true, or do you know what that refers to? For instance, on Policy PS 3.1, shoreline preservation is a city goal. The comment on their document is, "This policy does not apply to the Embarcadero waterfront from Tidylit's Park to Target Rock." A Policy PS 3.2, existing shoreline protective devices. Quote, "The policy does not apply to the Embarcadero waterfront from Tidylit's Park to Target Rock."
So, yeah, I mean, we have specific policies in there that allow for maintenance of our waterfront, meaning the bay itself and the revetments and those types of things that exist in the bay. Because we also have policies that suggest that you can't put hard armoring in those areas that are outside of the bay, right? Where you have wave action, you can't put in seawalls, like, say, north of the rock, you know, that type of thing. And so we have policies that are split out from that sort of core Embarcadero area inside, you know, along the waterfront there that allow us to do that. And we worked closely with coastal on putting those policies together, because they also said, "No, you get to maintain these areas in your plan." So they were completely on board with that, and assisted us and gave us several, you know, comments on revisions that worked on their side of things. Because remember, every project along the waterfront, while we issue a conditional use permit for it, they have to go to the Coastal Commission to get a coastal development permit from them. So we were making sure that we were, you know, understanding things the same, and that the language did what we wanted it to do, and that would be to allow the, you know, the preservation of our waterfront and the improvements that run along it, so.
Okay, and we have completed the housing element, correct? And we're not going to re-review that tonight, is that, or during this process?
That's correct. The council, I think, adopted that back in August of 2020.
Right, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that. Okay. Again, these were just general questions from council. We're going to go to the review of specific areas. And again, these are council questions, and you want to take it section by section? Is that correct?
Yeah, so I guess I would ask you this question, Mayor Harding. At this point, you've, council's asked questions. Do you want to open it up for the public right now? For their comments, or?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I was going to go to public comment first, but just from a process standpoint, so everybody knows, we're going to begin with the introduction, purpose of Plan Morro Bay, and just go through the elements and ask for council questions or thoughts. But I'll go ahead now, and I will go ahead and open up the general public comments. Excuse me, trying to get my video taken care of. There we go. And the screen shows the information. If you would like to go ahead and call in. Public comment is now available. The public hearing is now open. So, public comment, this is for item B-1 on the agenda. Any members of the public wishing to comment on this? You do have three minutes. Public comment is open. Thank you. And Anthony, sir, anybody for comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Kristin Headland with her hand raised. Kristin, I'm going to go ahead and try to unmute you.
Welcome, Kristin.
Kristin, you should be unmuted. Are you there?
Unmuted.
There we go. All right.
We hear you, Kristin. Welcome.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff. Kristin Headland, Morro Bay resident, 31 years. I wish to speak about the land use density for 3300 Panorama Drive. It's a 10-acre parcel across the street from where I live. I submitted a letter and a packet of documents to support my comments for this evening. Since 2016, my husband and I have attended General Plan Advisory Committee meetings, Planning Commission meetings, City Council meetings, along with workshops held by the city in regards to our concern for the land use designation of 3300 Panorama Drive. In 2017, it was noted as moderate density, zoned R1. In the October 2020 Plan Morro Bay, I noticed that it was changed to a higher density. So we participated in the 45-day review of Plan Morro Bay on November 20th and December 1st, Planning Commission meeting. We submitted a public comment and written documents with the request that the density be returned back to moderate density. And my request was not approved. Then we attended the Planning Commission meeting on March 16th, 2021, with additional comments and documents. At this time, the Community Development Director spoke about a 1995 general plan amendment titled "Morro Bay Plan Local Coastal Update", where the city of Morro Bay was amending parcels in Morro Bay, and one of them was 3300 Panorama Drive. This property at one time was a Navy jet fuel station. It sold to a private property. The city was in the process of rezoning and re-designated the old Navy jet fuel storage site from M1 Industrial to R1 Low-Medium Density Residential. The Coastal Commission approved the amendment with certification review, and the city of Morro Bay adopted the resolution in 1/13/1997. I'm here this evening to ask that you change the land use designation for 3300 Panorama back to moderate or low-medium, which equates to four to seven units per acre. And there are documents in the land use map, the housing element, and the EIR that reflect incorrect information that I asked that to be corrected. I want to thank everyone who participated in the past six years for the Plan Morro Bay, the Community Development Director's staff, GPAC, Planning Commission, the public, and my time's up, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Kristin. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, Mayor. I see Betty Winholtz with her hand up.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. This is Betty Winholtz. I'm assuming that we'll speak to anything that's in the blue element tonight. First, I want to express my official objection to not dealing with the environmental document first. According to my interpretation of SEQA, that you need to address that before you address the document, so you'll know how it's being impacted. Secondly, I actually have a question, which is how will public comment tonight, verbal comment, be conveyed to the Coastal Commission? Because I assume, as this is a hearing, that our comments will be passed on, or do we need to write them down, or is the verbal sufficient? Okay, those two things being said, I want to move on to the policies themselves. And I want to say in 1.2 and 1.4, I appreciate both of those policies, identifying realistic development and balancing needs of tourists with residents. I think those are two critical items that need to happen. Moving on to policies under Section 3, Policy 3.7, and a policy, I'll just stop right there. It talks about outward expansion, and it has two implementation, has no implementation items. And so I'm concerned that, what does that mean? A lot of our policies are very general. Some have implementation, some do not. So there, for me, is some conflict about what to expect. And I'll go on to Policy 4.2 and 4.5 in particular as reference to this, because they deal with Measure D. And it seems to me that the language that's in these two policy actually does not honor Measure D as the people's word, that this is how we want this particular area of the Embarcadero to be, but allows for, quote, "modifying" and, quote, "interim uses", which are not items that you would find that would be in sync with Measure D. So I want to raise red flags about those and hope that you would adjust those. Excuse me. I am confused about Policy 4.5 when it talks about some coastal land that is not, oh, I see, I'm really running out of time here. I don't know if you're going to let us talk again later. I guess what I want to say is I'm concerned also about 8.15, design flexibility. That seems a little bit too broad. 7.6, the Morro Bay Plan for the North Coast, that has to do with the Chevron property, and it does not mention at all the bicycle pedestrian connector to Cayucus, and it seems to me that should be in there. Maybe it is in the green print, but it seems to me that it should be in the blue as well, and that they should be coordinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Appreciate that. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and unmute Smith Held, please.
Welcome, Smith.
Okay, you are unmuted.
Thank you for the, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the issue. I'm Smith Held. I'm the Vice President- President of the Embarcadero Master Lease Holders Group. I've owned the lease at 901 Embarcadero since 1997, and I developed the retail and residential project at 591 Embarcadero several years later. Regarding Plan Morro Bay, my biggest concern is the plan diminishes your ability to achieve any redevelopment on your lease sites. Practically speaking, a developer can't pay for a full rebuild project in under 20 years, yet L U 8.3 seems to require a new discretionary permit every 20 years. So I don't know, I don't see how you're, I don't see how you're going to entice new money with that short a timeframe. Another significant concern is that Plan Morro Bay seems to eliminate your ability to control new projects. Once you give that to coastal, you don't get the authority variances, I don't think. So you're sort of stuck with exactly whatever the plan says, which leads into my next point, which I think you need a little more flexibility so you can approve the projects you want on your lease sites. Plan Morro Bay doesn't do that. Plan Morro Bay hinders that flexibility. Finally, the specificity, that's a word I don't use a lot in the documents, seems to be too much for a general plan. Most of the detail, including calling out specific addresses for special regulation, where it belongs in the zoning ordinance or the waterfront master plan, but once it's in the LCP, we don't get to, that becomes unchangeable. The, the level of detail in Plan Morro Bay takes away your ability to act by taking away your ability to grant variances for the projects that you want. We all want to get the new general plan done. It's been a long and costly project, and I think there's a lot of weariness at all levels to just get it done. However, the city stands to lose considerable income if, if lease sites aren't developed or redeveloped. We will, we'll all be far ahead to take a little more time to fix the known problems now, rather than just kick it down the road. I urge you to take the time to read the comments submitted by us, by the Master Lease Holders Association. We've studied the Plan Morro Bay document thoroughly through the lens of our businesses, and I think you'll find that our objections are reasonable, and that we have the city's best interest in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Smith. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Sharice Hansen with her hand raised. Okay, Sharice, I've unmuted you.
Welcome, Sharice.
Well, thank you. Hi, Mayor Heding and council members. Thank you for having me. I am speaking as a concerned community member of Morro Bay, and I wanted to request that you have HAB Harbor Advisory Board be included in this process and have them review one more time the, the document as it is at this point, and provide their recommendations prior to the final acceptance for Plan Morro Bay. During their review, they could work with Coastal Commission on the specific wording of the document and its interpretation. A lot of the members, or some of the members have dealt with Coastal Commission recently and worked well with them, and we do understand, or they do understand that there are certain things that cannot be omitted, but there's also ways that it can be stated that benefit everyone. And by benefiting everyone, I'm referring to what Smith Held just referred to as the desirability of investors and developers and just development period on the Embarcadero, and having it be something that continues to flourish and to not stagnate over the interpretation of the way that Plan Morro Bay is currently. So wouldn't take too long, just another little look at how it's worded, and that would be my recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you, Sharice. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Bob Fowler with his hand up. Okay, Bob, I am unmuting you. Go ahead.
Welcome, Bob.
All right, Bob, I've unmuted you. You should be live.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, Bob, welcome.
I'm sorry. There was another button to push. I didn't realize it. I'm, I'm new at this. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time that you're giving us to make this presentation. We've submitted a, our comments to the City Council, along with those were specific recommendations in terms of the changes in language that we were suggesting. In particular, the mayor mentioned the shoreline protective issues there. What we put in there was, was specific changes to that. I think Scott said that those items don't pertain to the Embarcadero, that they recognize that we need to be able to maintain those. We'd like that to be explicit in, in the document. We, we didn't read it that way. In particular, land use element seven point, I'm sorry, land use element 7.8 appears to require a discretionary permit every 20 years for redemptions or structures in the water, shoreline protective kinds of things. It doesn't seem that that should apply to the Embarcadero, because that's going to restrict the City Council from being able to negotiate leases that exceed 20 years. If, if that's not the intent, then we think it needs to specifically say that. As to overnight accommodations, the city has 52% affordable overnight accommodations now. By imposing the 25% requirement on just the Tidelands properties, you're devaluing the, the city's property there and making it more difficult to attract the investment capital that you need. The, the city's budget depends on about two, receives about $2 million in direct rents and so forth from the Embarcadero properties, not to mention the TOT and sales tax that they generate, as well as the sales tax and TOT that's generated elsewhere in the city by the, the Embarcadero being there. There's a section on sea level rise having to do with the, the lateral access. And we, they've included some very specific addresses and so forth there, and we think that's inappropriate for, for this level of a document to, to do that. In addition, the sea level rise doc, uh, study that the city is relying on says that we're going to see, there's a 50% chance that we'll see two feet of sea level rise by 2100, and less than one half of 1% probability for it to reach six feet. The Embarcadero has over seven feet of free board now. So it, it seems that a general comment that this, that the sea level rise be monitored and dealt with in the future would be more appropriate. Lateral access is the other issue that we're concerned about. It's been at eight feet since it's been implemented. We have almost 80% of it already in, or to be in with projects that have already been approved. Now we're changing it to 10 to 12 feet of unstructured area. That's contrary to even the city's policies in downtown.
Thank you, Bob.
So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, then I will go ahead and close public comment. Goodbye. There we go. Get that camera on. Thank you very much. Just a couple of general responses. Ms. Winholtz, you or others will have several opportunities to weigh in as this will occur over three City Council meetings, so there will be more time to be able to do that. I just wanted to make sure that that was addressed, so that everybody knew that there would be other opportunities. Mr. Graham, could you just briefly express to us how public comment received is transmitted to the Coastal Commission?
Well, we'll be providing them links to our, our YouTube channel. We'll also be providing them the minutes. Those will be conveyed along with the document to the Coastal Commission. So I'll have our minutes, and they'll have the link to the YouTube channel so they can actually review testimony if they'd like.
Okay. And could you just speak to Ms. Winholtz's issue about us not, she's objecting to us not addressing the environmental document first? Is there an issue with that legally? Maybe Chris could weigh in, or you?
So, so the requirement is simply that you adopt the, the final environmental impact report before you approve Plan Morro Bay? And that's what you'll be doing. That's what the recommendation is. The entire, you know, document is in front of you, because that's the way we noticed it. And so you have links to all of those things. But yeah, you'll be, you'll be approving the, the final EIR, you know, as the first portion of the approval, and then moving to the, the document itself afterward.
Perfect. Thank you for that. And then the question on section 3.7, quote unquote, no implementation policies?
Um, some of our, some of our, we don't have implementation items in, under all policies. Some don't. Some, it's just, you know, the, the information and go do items, if you will, if you will, are found in the policy level. That's, 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 we have that, that's throughout the document. Sometimes we have implementation items, sometimes there's not a go do, it's just a policy that you have to adhere to.
Gotcha. And then also, Ms. Winholtz referred to section 4.2 and 4.5, indicating that the language does not honor Measure D. Could you speak to that, sir?
Uh, I would have to bring it up to look at, see what exactly it says. I will say we had a, a rather significant vetting that included the HAB and Subcommittee of the Harbor Advisory Board and Planning Commission review the Measure D language and help develop it as part of this process. Let's see here. Yeah, let me look real quick here. You said 4.2?
4.2 and 4.5.
Amy, have you looked that up? Do you have that in front of you? I don't, I'm still trying to find it.
Yeah. So 4.2 is a very short policy. It just says ensure commercial fishing activity is prioritized in the Measure D area. I'm not sure if she had a-
Could you introduce yourself for those that didn't-
Good evening, everyone. Amy Sinsar, Placeworks.
Thank you.
Yes. So, Policy 4.2 just generally states the, the overall intent of Measure D, which I believe is to prioritize coastal fishing, commercial fishing, excuse me. And so I'm not sure if she had a comment on that one.
Her comment was that, quote unquote, the language does not honor Measure D, section 4.
Right. So I'm not sure what the comment would be there. Policy 4.4 is regarding interim uses in the coastal zone being allowed.
4.5 was the other one. 4.2 and 4.5.
Okay. Well, I know she spoke about interim uses, and those are mentioned in 4.4.
Okay.
So I wanted to point that out. And they are something that's, you know, that was discussed by the community and then added in here, and I believe also into the draft zoning. And they need to be consistent with Measure D per this policy. 4.5 is about recreational uses, and it says oceanfront lands designated for open space slash recreation shall be protected for public recreational use and development unless present and foreseeable future demand for public or commercial recreational activities that could be accommodated in those designated areas is already adequately provided for in the area. So that is 4.5.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. With that, we are through, at least for this portion of public comment. And so, council, what we're going to do is, and we'll take a five minute break, we're going to begin by looking at, and I'll give you time to pull up your documents, hopefully, the introductory section, and I'll take it one section at a time as outlined on page 363 of the staff report, which was the presentation that Mr. Graham gave. Each of those sections will be looking for your specific comments with regard to any proposed changes or, or issues with those areas. So we'll go ahead and take, let's see, I have 734. 739, we'll be back. And go ahead and start that review. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Anthony, we are back.
All right, I have all my devices rolling and the floor is yours.
Ready to go, thank you for that. We're back from our break. Hopefully I gave you an extra minute. Hopefully you've had the opportunity to find your documents. And so we're going to go ahead and start with the introduction section on Plan More Obey. And generally I'll just ask for any comments and then we'll entertain discussion. I won't ask you to raise your hand, but I'll try to just say in general, if you have any comments, go ahead and I'll try to navigate that way and see if that works. So let me start with the number one, introduction section for the purpose. Purpose of Plan More Obey, section 1-1 or page 1-1. Any comments from council on that section? Hearing done. Let's move to, let's see. The introductory section on the local coastal program. Any comments on that, section 1-5? Hearing done. Go ahead and move to, let's see. Get my document right, to the vision statement. Comments on vision, that is page 2-1, section 2, vision. Let me just do a check. Councilmember Heller, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Councilmember Addis, are we there? Just want to make a check, make sure we're there.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, Councilmember Addis, are you with us?
I'm here and I heard your questions and I did not have any questions.
I felt lonely. Councilmember Davis, are you there?
Yes, and since I helped to write the vision statement, I wanted to say that I approve it.
And you think it's probably one of the best ever written, I understand.
Probably, yes.
And Councilmember Barton, are you there? Just checking in. Perhaps not. Laurel, are you with us? Dana, do you see, let's see if I can find her. Councilmember Barton, I see you. You're muted. Looks like you're there. Councilmember Barton, are you with us? You look like you are. Well, we do have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and move forward. There are no comments on the vision section, which is section 2, starting on section or page 2-1. I will move to the section 3A blueprint introduction. Give you a second to get there? Any comments, issues, concern? Hearing done. No questions on that. Land use, section 3B, starting on page 3-5. 3B, land use.
I have comments.
Yes, sir, thank you. Councilmember Heller.
Okay, so we have talked about a couple of land use issues. One, it has to do with the power plant site, some of the surrounding area. The chamber suggested that the frontage to that property, Arcadero, be made visitor-serving commercial. Am I to understand it correctly that, one other thought, the conversation's come up a lot about residential use on the power plant site and so forth. If I understand this correctly, if PG&E agrees and Vista wants this done and DTSC will allow us to clean up a portion of that site and the city wants this to happen as well, that can happen under the context of the current land use designations?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not something we need to decide right now, but if all parties wanted that and agreed to it, that could be a part of the use?
It can be, yes. They would just have to make those clearances. And I've talked with DTSC about it and it's just clearing it to a level it would allow for residential. As far as the other restriction on the property with PG&E, that's a negotiated issue that they'd have to deal with PG&E. And again, my understanding is Mr. has spoken with them about that.
Okay, and then I think you also said regarding that property that the battery storage is not yet an approved use with the current land use that's being proposed. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, so that has to be part of their application before?
Yes, it can be part of their application. It could be something that's added in by the council now, as part of this process. It's kind of up to you. We're in the beginning stages of review of their application, their development application, so they could include it in that as well. So it's either way.
So you don't have a preference one way or the other?
It doesn't make any difference to me, no.
Okay. And then the issue of the triangle parking lot and the possible visitor-serving commercial. That was discussed. How did you say we could address that?
So that's, I mean, for me anyway, at least for the six and a half years I've been here, that has been the hot potato of a piece of property in town. You know, we have all of these conflicting uses. You know, we've looked at it for a boat facility. We have boat storage there right now. We have the desire of the Maritime Museum to expand a little bit back there. And then we have the RV camping program. So there's a lot of competing things going on there. And my feeling related to that request on the part of the chamber, Government Affairs Committee, is something that would take some vetting. I mean, that's not something that's gone through any of the review process for this document, meaning it hasn't been vetted or even discussed with the General Plan Advisory Committee or the Planning Commission. It wasn't something that came up as part of the workshops that we had. So this is something that's completely new, I guess, is where I'm at. And I know there's a lot of interest related to that site. So that's the only reason I caution, there's a lot of competing ideas about things that could go there. So kind of offhandedly making a decision would be difficult and probably generate a considerable amount of ire, I would imagine.
Right, right. So what would be the process in the future for resolving these kinds of plan use questions?
So I think if we're going to do, we have the requirement for a master plan on the visitor facility itself. We could certainly add in, in looking at that and the uses that are appropriate for there, we could add in the triangle piece and say that this conversation needs to be had in association with that. So we can look at it all together because it's kind of, it all lines up right there. So I think that might be a halfway decent way to deal with it. Unless the council has some desire to have us go back and talk to the Planning Commission about it and see what their thought is, because it's not something that they've vetted, because they didn't see it. We didn't get the letter from the GAC until afterwards, after they made their recommendation.
Yeah, okay, that's good. I mean, my thought about the Planning Commission obviously does an outstanding job, but my sense about that property, because there's so many stakeholders and interests, that it's going to end up on the council's desk anyway. So maybe we should just handle it directly, bend that way, just a thought. The Measure D comment Ms. Lynn Holtz made, is that a land use issue? Just so I can say that my sense about it, I mean, I haven't been involved in politics too long here, but all I hear from the commercial fishing community is that Measure D has not been followed. And if you look at the development in place, it hasn't really followed Measure D. Obviously, commercial fishing has changed over the years. And yet this plan says to prioritize commercial fishing, which I've heard Measure D is all about, but doesn't seem to be happening. So is this the right thing to be putting in the general plan?
I think it is. You know, I know Betty, Ms. Lynn Holtz ran out of time there and I'm sure she had more to say and just didn't have time to say it. So I mean, maybe Betty can put together some comments and give them to us in writing and then the council can have those when we pick this up at the next meeting. But we ran this, again, we had a Subcommittee of the Harbor Advisory Board and the Planning Commission review Measure D and come up with this language. They've edited it and then it came back through Planning Commission and then was put into place into the document. So there was a lot of discussion about this. We had stakeholders that came to the meetings to voice their concerns and opinions. And my opinion is it was well-vetted. I'm not exactly sure what the specific concern is from Betty. And like I said, maybe she could provide us something in writing that maybe explains that for the next meeting or she can speak at the next meeting and explain that. But the intent was to make it Measure D compliant and to be specific. And I thought we did that, so.
Okay, well, I think that's a good suggestion. Maybe Betty can submit that and I guess I'd kind of like to hear from the commercial fishing folks maybe one last time on that. Regarding the issue of 3300 panorama that Ms. Hedland brought up, I know that the housing element is done, but this has been a longstanding issue. I think I'm impressed with the research that she's done. Are you prepared to, for the record, make the change that she's suggesting?
Yeah, you and me both. I'm impressed with the research she's done as well. I very much appreciate Ms. Hedland. You know, she's been in all of our meetings, really, every time we bring this up and bring this issue up. And it was just honestly, I randomly found a folder where I was cleaning out a filing cabinet in my office that had the staff report from the Coastal Commission meeting where we sent 45 changes to the GPLCP. And one of them was the 3300 panorama thing. And when I found it, I sent that off to the Coastal Commission and said, "What happened with this?" Because I don't know, it was unclear. And Ms. Hedland was able to sort of connect all of the dots. I went and did all the research separately. I see the dots there. And so I went back to Coastal and the Coastal Planner and asked him, you know, like, "Well, did you read, have you looked through this and do you concur?" Because I mean, the staff report from Coastal was a little weirdly written. And it was just kind of how they did it back then, they don't do it that way anymore. And I haven't heard back from them, but I am comfortable, you know, if the council would like to give direction to make the change, I'm comfortable with where we're at. It seems to me that that was always the intent. It's just the problem that we ran into on our side of things is if we couldn't get confirmation about it, didn't have all the pieces, then we're not actually able to downzone property or density because the laws changed recently. And I didn't want to get the city in trouble. So was not willing to make it until we got confirmation, but I'm pretty comfortable with where we're at, even if we can't hear back from Coastal.
That's great. And if you have an opening in your department, you might talk to Ms. Hedland and see if she's interested in doing research.
It's a solid suggestion.
The other thing I want to talk about is something that Chamber Commerce brought up, and that's the projection that we would add 3 million feet of commercial space in the next 20 years. Can you address that concern and that issue and how you came up with that number?
So it largely has to do with the floor area ratios that are assigned in the new general plan. We don't have floor area ratios in the old general plan. State law has changed since that was originally done and now we're required to have them. And so it deals with the overall square footage that's out there, which is a little over 100 acres, and then placing a visitor-serving use on it and then what the floor area ratio is. And then when you put the mixed-use residential overlay on top of it, the General Plan Advisory Committee, the Planning Commission, you know, we're all interested when we were looking at the properties about not being too restrictive because we didn't know what was going to come forward. And so they said, "Visitor-serving commercial seems like what we should have here because it's kind of along the waterfront." You know, that made sense to them. And they said, "Well, we'd always like to be able to have the opportunity to have housing if somebody wants to build it." It doesn't mandate it, but it says, "If you want to build it." And then when they looked at it, they placed that visitor, that mixed-use residential designation over some other areas in town, other commercial areas as well. And they said, "Well, we don't want to dictate or what the density is. We want to allow them to build as much housing as they can because we're sort of restricted. You know, we're mostly built out." And so they said, "Well, let's just do it at the higher density number, which is, what is it? It's 15 to 27 units per acre." And they said, "And then they could just build what they can fit on the site, you know, based on a discretionary review process." And so that's why it ends up with, you know, a large amount of square footage. Realistically though, I mean, it's not going to build out to that during the life of the general plan. And probably not ever, because you never really ever reached complete buildout. The idea is that you, but you do have to evaluate it as it relates to what those impacts are for traffic and other things in the environmental review for the project. And so that's why you end up with, in the EIR that we'll talk about at the next meeting, you know, statements of overriding consideration for traffic impacts. Because if you did build it all the way out, because you have to look at worst-case scenario, then it could be problematic. But I don't think we're ever going to get there. It's just a requirement of how we have to do the environmental review for the project.
And then the 16,000 new jobs is also part of that formulation, is that right?
Correct. Yeah, it's based on the square footage and the type of uses that are allowed underneath that visitor-serving commercial designation.
So that will impact our circulation plan considerably, I would imagine?
If it went to full buildout, it would, yes. And you can already see that with the battery project, if that does move forward, then you have 20-plus acres that are taken out of it.
Right. Do you think at this point, you know, since it is kind of a maximum, does it make any sense maybe to look at that number again? Or because the whole, one of the chambers concerned is the job housing mix, which obviously doesn't help us if we actually build out that space and have 16,000 more employees here commuting from downtown to New York.
It is, you know, it is the conversation that, you know, GPAC, Planning Commission, we even had this discussion with council as well, I keep leaving off council, but council made the final thumbs up with the land use decisions that you see in front of you right now. We've been changing them from when the city council last reviewed them. So, you know, it is a maximum number. You can already see how, you know, when you actually fit development onto the site, it looks a lot different than just placing the maximum amount footprint that you can sit out there, right?
Right.
So that's, and it also deals with, you know, can it be two stories and how much of a footprint that has? It's all of those types of things that go into it. Like I said, you never develop to the full amount. You never get full buildout. It's always something less than that. And certainly will be, you know, over the life of the plan, so.
Okay. And then my last, that's a good answer. The last land use question I have is, throughout the document, it seems to indicate that we're built out and implying that we have to expand city limits. When I look around and when I look at some of the density issues, some of the density solutions that we could provide as well as whatever might be coming at us from Sacramento in terms of increasing densities on R1 lots, et cetera, et cetera. I see infill as being, there's plenty of it still. We're not really that built out if we have to deal with increased densities. And if we really wanted to build a more dense core, we could do that without too much trouble. I mean, is that your opinion or do you really think that we're built out?
I mean, we're built out from a standpoint that we don't have a whole lot of vacant lots out there, you know, like vacant lot land inventory. I agree with you. I think you make a very good point that we can densify. And that's really what the housing element talks about. I mean, it talks about is really densifying, you know. And it takes into account, you know, in R1 neighborhoods, having accessory dwelling units, junior accessory dwelling units and, you know, whatever the next round of housing changes that are going to come out of the legislature. You know, I mean, there's talks of sort of doing away with R1 zoning and allowing duplexes and fourplexes on single-family home lots. So we'll see if that makes it through or not. But, you know, those are certainly things that are on the horizon, which kind of match what you just said, meaning we can densify to increase housing opportunities in the city. So that's not, you're not off-base there.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Those are my questions. Thank you to your staff for all your- Thank you to your staff for all your work on this, and the Planning Commission, and the GPAC, and the, you know, I mean, wow, thanks.
Hey, thanks, Jeff. Great questions. Appreciate that. Want to continue on this section? Any other council member comments, questions? Well, I'll chime in. Scott, I know that we talked, at least during your presentation, and I remember being involved on a number of projects that not involved, but have been briefed on a number of projects where the the concern with regard to Coastal's requirement that 25% of the available rooms for hotels in visitor serving areas, especially on the Embarcadero, be my term, low cost, or that there be a range of accommodations that would be appropriate for economically challenged individuals. And I and I struggle as a business person, you know, former business owner or an entrepreneur, et cetera, with this notion of a mandate that is unenforceable. I just don't understand how Coastal Commission is able to enforce this, or how a hotelier can even vet this with regard to determining who's appropriate for those accommodations. Has there been any discussion in your talks with Coastal staff regarding what appears to be a mandate that not only is not enforceable, but also may be inconsistent with regard to equity determinations for individuals it's designed to serve? Long winded, you're muted, Scott.
Thank you. But that is a that is a fair point. We've had lots of conversations with Coastal about this. The 25% limitation, you know, the individual operators of those facilities aren't required to find folks that are income qualified. It's basically you win the lottery, right? You get the you get the cheap room on the waterfront if you, you know, hopped onto Expedia and were able to book it, right? That's how it works. So, I mean, probably even raising more questions in your mind about equity, since it's not really going to folks necessarily that it might otherwise be meant to go to, folks with lower incomes. So, yeah, I mean, it raises issues. It also raises issues in the context of the of our overall document. When we're looking at, you know, addressing sea level rise impacts along the waterfront, you know, as part of a redevelopment of that waterfront, you know, you're also then having folks that have those lease sites and redevelop them, you know, their revenue potential is reduced, so they have less of an ability to be adaptive in their in their future projects. So, yeah, I mean, it raises a good issue, and and one that Coastal is pretty adamant on with us, that that we need to have these here because these, you know, properties are unique. I will say that I think, you know, they also were a little flexible in in dealing with this because they just apply this standard anyway to waterfront properties. So even if it's not in our current plan, they've applied it to projects, Rose's Landing being being one, the Off the Hook with Shree Hansen, who spoke earlier, and her husband, they're on their lease sites, they applied there, and they had a reduced standard for the amount. I can't remember the number off the top of my head, and Cindy was the planner on it, so she could probably chime in, but they reduced it based on other public or extra public benefit that they had associated with that project. So it was a negotiated thing. But here, they said it's got to be the 25%, and, you know, they they were really not so interested in negotiating on that point. That was the that was the one sticking point with the staff. Certainly, you know, the issue was raised previously, that staff's not the one that makes the decision, it's the the commission itself that does.
And are you aware of any GPs, LCPs that have gone through Coastal that have not had this requirement, so to speak, in their plan, and where it was certified?
I don't I I know they said they had some that were working their way through. I don't know if they've come before the the commission recently or not. I I I don't have a good answer for you for you on that. I don't know if maybe Amy or Cindy has some input there.
I think what I recall in the direction that they had steered us to as far as sample policy language was the City of Pacific Row.
That's right.
They haven't always required 25%. And in the case of the lease site with Shree Hansen, they proposed a range of other public amenities, so there is some nuance to this. The other wrinkle is that there are, I don't know, probably a good handful, if not more than that, of cities up and down the coast that have very old local coastal plans, like the city of Morro Bay. And it's been a priority of the Coastal Commission to ensure equitable access among all Californians to have this affordable accommodation. For Morro Bay, you know, we're a little bit ahead of the curve. The the commission has given out millions of dollars in grant funding for coastal cities to update their LCPs, so I think it's still evolving, and I see Amy has her camera on, so I'll let you weigh in as well, Amy.
Yeah, good evening again. I was just going to say I haven't heard of any that don't have it. I know of a couple that either I've worked on or that we've used as references, like Cindy said, for this project that do have that 25% requirement.
So I guess my question would be, is there with regard to these exceptions that have been made with other mitigating circumstances, is there the possibility of perhaps amending our language that would include some of that? Because it sounds like to me, you know, that this is just my turn, this could be a game breaker or a deal breaker with regard to Coastal trying to go there, and I'm not afraid to do that with actually the commission at all, been there, done that with other issues. But but my question is, is there some way to incorporate some mitigating language in there that wouldn't put the absolute requirement, but might offer potential alternatives? I'm all for access and affordable access. As a policymaker, I believe in that, but when there's a mandate that that, one, potentially punishes economically challenged small businesses, it concerns me. And number two, when it's not enforceable, not vettable, and totally defeats the potential purpose that it's designed to accommodate, I guess I have problems with that as a policymaker.
Yeah, and to speak to your comment about the enforceability of that, in past coastal development permits, the commission has required annual reporting of revenues, and that's how they enforce that condition at at the coastal level. So I just wanted to respond to that.
Yeah, but that doesn't ensure that the economically challenged individual gets the room or the accommodation.
Yeah, 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 it's it's much like Yosemite in July, I think.
Yeah, exactly. So I guess my question to you, staff, and I won't belabor the issue, I would support some kind of mitigating language that would assist some of our business entities in understanding what some of the potential exceptions might be, if that makes sense. I don't know. But but that's just that's my comment. That's my comment.
So I do have a maybe a clarifying question. So we do have other policy language that would applies to other facilities, other, you know, hotel motel type facilities, you know, when the city reaches, you know, an overall affordability, you know, level that's that's under the 25%, you know, or if you have hotels that come forward that don't have them in it, it calls for putting some public amenities in those. So we have language that exists in the current document that we could apply it down on the waterfront. So my question is, is it we we don't want to be prescriptive and have there be a number, like, it's 25% now, but we could do some of this mitigating language and make it 15, and that might be with the council, we could put that forward, or it could be 10% with the mitigating language that we have in other policies, or no number? I could get some input.
That's a that's a great question, Mr. Graham. Well, my preference would be no number, but and, you know, I'm just one council member making a comment. I don't know that there's majority support for that, but I'm offering that up as a comment and a concern. I know it comes up in multiple venues in multiple cities, and talking with my peer mayors, we discussed it a number of times, and it does raise concerns for me, so. And, you know, I'm willing to, as you come back, look at maybe even some of the mitigations that you you spoke of, you know, like 10% with this or whatever, but.
I'd like to hear from the other council members on the issue.
Right, yeah, exactly. And so, folks, when it's time to weigh in, love to hear your comments, other council members on this issue, because this is just me speaking, and there are five of us. So with that, let me move to the lateral access issue, LU 7.1. And with regard to some of the comments that were made by the Embarcadero leaseholder group folks about the harbor walk and 10 versus eight feet, it it seems to be, at least according to them, something that economically is very challenging and costly, as I guess new leases come up and that requirement moves forward. Again, I'm looking for absolutes. Are there are there opportunities to mitigate this with the existing 10-foot issue, or what are your thoughts about that?
So the the current LCP policy is eight feet, and every project that's come forward along the waterfront, and there have been several since I've been here for the last six and a half plus years, have had the requirement put on them by Coastal of 10 feet. So I would, and that's been going back even prior to my arrival here, I mean, it's been that for several years prior to that. I would also say that when your planning commission reviewed this, they were pretty unanimous in the desire to maintain public access along the waterfront, and that being paramount and and upfront with them, meaning things kind of we get mission creep out there, and you get some things that end up out there in the in that public access way that narrows it down, makes it look less public, so it gets used less. Huge concern from your planning commission when they reviewed this, and they were adamant about not reducing it. They did, they did, you know, they gave the opportunity for the waterfront leaseholder group to provide a presentation to the to the planning commission specifically on their letter, and Kathy Novak spoke representing them. They listened to what she had to say, they had the letter, they read through it, but that was one thing that they were not interested in. And I know that the 10-foot, you know, you know, issue for Coastal is a is a pretty significant one, so I don't know how far we could really get on that, given we've been doing this for years now, providing 10-foot wide access along the waterfront.
Okay, okay, then, no comment on that. And let me follow up on Councilmember Heller's question. We do have, well, not two projects, but we had Mr. Marts, who does does not have a submission looking for changes now in land use designation or zoning. And then we have the the Vistra issue with regard to a submitted project. Could you reiterate your thoughts about anything that might be required of council now, should that project move forward, look viable, and what the process would be for appropriate zoning? I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Okay, so we have a we have a we have a few moving parts here, and there's a couple of different ways to address it. The Vistra could include in their application a request for a land use change that that simply allows utility type use, or specifically a battery project, that's fine, too. You know, in this, under this land use category and in this and in what is the same zone, it's visitor serving commercial for both, and we could just add that in there, we add it into the zoning code as well, it'd be consistent, and that would be fine. They could do that, that can either be done by council as we're going through this process, or it can be done by the applicant through their application process. We haven't gotten far enough down the road with their application that it really has any impact, we just tell them you need to submit that to us now, and we'll incorporate it in there, and as their, you know, project winds its way through the process, it would just be part of that. So those are the those are kind of the two options as it relates to, you know, that specific issue allowing, you know, accommodating the battery project, those would be the two ways to do it, would be to incorporate it in the language now, or to have them incorporated into their application moving forward. And we are supposed to be getting a a written response to Coastal Commission's view on consistency with both our current LCP and the proposed language in the document before you this evening.
So we would have that before we're finished with our overall process?
I'm hoping we get it this week, because it's about two weeks late. But then, we also received word today that our coastal planner, Colin Bowser, is leaving the Coastal Commission, so I don't know. It's not good news, so.
We can hope, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Let's see, we had some comments with regard to the leaseholders on the Embarcadero, specifically referring to LU 7.8, sea level rise impacts on lateral access, and specifically Section A calling out specific addresses. And that was a concern to them. Can you speak to why those specific addresses are are called out, and your thoughts about that?
This dates back to the some of the background documentation, and I might ask Amy to help me out a little bit here, but I think we did a survey of properties, and these are some of the properties that are are lower lying along the waterfronts, and were ones that were identified where remediation would be needed sooner rather than later, or compared to some of the other ones, and I may have butchered that, so I'll ask for help from a friend.
Yeah, that's correct, and to elaborate a little more, we prepared the lateral access memo, which was one of the grant deliverables, and then also the sea level rise memo was prepared, and so basically taking those two together and looking at what the existing access is on each lease site. So that's why it's different for each lease site, because it's looking at what's there now, and then how does that actually interact with what's projected for sea level rise? And then what ended up in that policy is the, you know, assessment of what would be needed at those points in time.
So that's why they ever singled out those individual sites?
Yeah, because we actually, you know, did mapping and an assessment of each site on the ground, and some of them have floating access now, some of them don't, some of them have permanent attached access now. So, as you know, it's it's a mix of things, and I guess the only thing I would say in addition is there may be some changes since this was written that would affect this, you know, list of what happens at each site, because I know there have been changes with applications and so forth, but other than that, it was, you know, what we saw on the ground at the time.
Okay, all right. And I think that's it for myself. Let me go on and see, I've got to remember the way I'm calling. Well, I'm not calling anybody. Councilmember Heller has commented, I've commented. Anybody else want to weigh in on our comments or make other comments on this specific section, land use element?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. A couple of other things that the Master Leaseholders Association brought up, having to do with protective devices. One is a requirement that a lease site applied for a permit for protective devices every 20 years, and their concern is that that means that a leasehold is really no good for longer than 20 years for financing purposes. So could you speak to that, please?
What was the policy number on that? Do you have that?
I think I might here, hold on.
It looks like maybe Amy might have it, I don't know.
Uh, let's see.
I believe it's LU 8.13, but it was referenced in a couple different ways in a couple different comment letters, and.
LU 8.3, I think, Amy, what I had.
Yeah, I don't see it in 8.3, so I thought maybe there was a typo and it was 8.13. I would definitely like others to take a look and see.
Yeah, I was having the same issue, I couldn't find it.
Let me see.
LU 8.3 is quite short, and. LU 8.3 is quite short and is on a different topic.
Yeah. I'm just looking at the document received from that group, and it does reference 8.3, requires each lease site to apply for a permit, basically blah, 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 that will limit the city's ability to enter in the leases that exceed 20 years. 8.13. Also, they reference 8.13? Nothing there?
Yeah, that's the one that I think they're referring, is the correct reference.
Yeah, I see it.
That is a pretty long policy that includes the 20-year mitigation period.
Okay, so.
It's 3-56 of the document, but I'm not sure about the staff report.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know about staff report, but it is 356.
Okay.
I have some thoughts on your question. I don't know if you want me to go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. That's fine.
And Scott may want to respond as well. So, my understanding is the 20-year timeframe in this policy is really related to sea level rise and the impact, you know, how quickly the impacts might change. And that's why 20 years is in there, rather than a longer timeframe. I would look to maybe Scott or Eric to respond, you know, how that might interact with the lease renewals, and if lease renewal would need to be required at that time. But I don't know that that was the intent of this policy.
Perhaps I could add on to Councilmember Davis's comment, since we're linked on these items. The issue is the amortization period and the ability to secure lending for the improved asset on-site. When you're limited to 20 years, no bank will lend you money based upon an amortization period of only 20 years with the renewal required every 20 years. And that's the significant concern of leaseholders.
Yeah, my recollection of this was the same as Amy's, is it was to, you know, make sure that we're adequately addressing sea level rise impacts over time. I don't remember it being anything else. I mean, certainly we could reach out and ask Coastal, because the language came from them.
Yeah, I was going to add that the 20-year increment refers to a coastal permit amendment, not a conditional use permit, unless I'm misreading LU 8.13. But we did get a lot of edits from Coastal Commission staff and their sea level rise experts that they have on staff, because that was part of our grant deliverables. And I think that their concern is that the science is changing faster than we can keep up with it at a policy level, and that this was the way to, you know, address that.
So what you're saying is the requirement is that they will have to apply for a coastal permit amendment prior to the expiration of the 20-year mitigation period, of that their lease... So what if there was a possibility that the permit was denied, that would jeopardize the quote-unquote "business" to perform?
Yeah, I mean, and technically, that's no different than how it is today, because we issue use permits on the waterfront, and we always add a condition that they have to get a coastal development permit. And we work with coastal staff, and, you know, we help facilitate that process. But at any given point, the Coastal Commission, you know, they make the decisions. They could deny a coastal development permit. So it shouldn't be too dissimilar. Of course, this is, you know, a much weightier topic.
And this specifically talks about, you know, looking at, are there any impacts from the, say, like revetments in the harbor? Are there any impacts from that that need to be mitigated? And the things that they talk about here would be like seawall-type things that are out in areas where we wouldn't be allowed. So I don't know how, you know, relevant it really is. You know, it talks about sand supply and things like that in association with this. So I don't know what necessarily the issue would be, other than, you know, sea level is rising faster than we thought, and, you know, the walls aren't going to be high enough to protect the infrastructure that's there, meaning, you know, water, sewer, you know, impacts, you know, from rising sea level, so.
So, I want to let Councilmember Davis continue, but I guess my last point on that is, is there any leeway with regard to the 20 years? We don't know.
This, yeah, I mean, this language came from the Coastal Commission, and this deals with the permits day issue. You know, this is sort of, I mean, like, it doesn't matter. We could strike all this out of the document. I mean, they'd probably put it back in, but they would just apply it anyway, because it's not our permit. We're not issuing this.
Yeah. And they would likely issue a coastal development permit and then add a condition that says, "This permit's only good for 20 years. You have to come back in 20 years."
This is sort of a heads-up, so you know that it's coming if you read the document. I think it's more of a put people on notice.
Yeah. Councilmember Davis, I'm sorry, since we were linked, I was chiming in, but please continue.
Thank you. I think that's the best answer we can get, and I appreciate your expertise in community development to tell us that. The leaseholders made another assertion about the likelihood of sea level rise, which I'm not able to find. They refer to a sea level rise adaptation strategy report. And what they claim is that that report predicts a 50% probability of a two-foot rise by 2100, but they are being required to plan for a five-foot sea level rise, which they say is a one-half of 1% likelihood. Does that, does that strike a chord with you, Scott? The sea level rise adaptation strategy report.
We do have that report. Amy, were you going to say something?
Yeah, so that is one of the appendices to the plan, and it is what a lot of the sea level rise pieces in the plan are based on. And my recollection is that we were planning for the worst-case scenario. I would also echo what Cindy said a minute ago, that everything that has come up in our more recent conversations with the Coastal Commission staff is that the analysis that our report was based on, which is now a couple of years old, the current analysis and modeling is making things look worse. So I'm not sure what Coastal would say if we wanted to go the other direction.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, they had us amend the source for looking at sea level rise, and we had to change that. We changed that source in the document. I think it was, it points us to OPC's website, is that right, what they do now? So, because of that issue, our data in the Moffett Nickel Report is again outdated, as Amy had said. Sea level is rising unfortunately faster than that document anticipated.
Okay, so, again, the ball is in Coastal Commission's court, and I am aware that sea level rise and land retreat are among their core values. So I doubt the efficacy of trying to argue them out of that. So, that's all my questions and comments, and again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Addis?
I was just going to react. Well, number one, I also met with the leaseholders as well as the chamber, and read the public comment, and just appreciate all who weighed in on this and asked really pertinent questions. And want to express my agreement that we would, you know, we want to move Morro Bay forward. I think that was a lot of what I heard from the public, was please let's have a plan that helps Morro Bay move forward. And I want to express that I'm in agreement with that, and I also believe that staff is in agreement with that, and that getting this plan approved is going to be part of that process. In terms of the mayor's comments around the low-income occupancy, I just kind of wanted to weigh in on that. And I was wondering, Scott, if there's a percent of low-income occupancy for hotels on the, down there now, when you were asking, like, if we prefer a specific number or no number?
Um, no. So this, I mean, maybe I'm not understanding what you're saying, so please stop me if I'm not. So, we don't have, the requirement right now, Coastal applies the 25% number to our waterfront folks anyway. I mean, they just do it through conditioning, because they get a coastal development permit from the Coastal Commission, not the City of Morro Bay. And so that's where this came from. So I don't know that, we only have this applied to a few of the hotel projects down there. We have the Front Street Hotel, I think, has this on it. We have Roses Landing has it. And then was off the hook previously, which is Sharice and Travis, Travis's project. And I don't know, Cindy, are there others?
There are others. The Astero Inn, they were not required to provide onsite accommodations. So our current LCP has this requirement. It's in Chapter 2 of our current land use plan. But with the Astero Inn, that was approved, I think, in 2009, they were just required to provide INLU mitigation. And I think that's the rub with the Coastal Commission, is because many of the previous hotel projects that, you know, predate Scott and myself, you know, in years past, they were conditioned to provide INLU mitigation. And what would happen is, is that the fee amount was so low, that what the commission staff told us is that there's not actually any affordable accommodation that's being provided, and that you really need to provide onsite mitigation to meet that requirement. And so that's why, you know, they've been telling us what the commissioners themselves are saying, that this is really important to them and part of their core values, just equity.
I guess where I would land on that is, I would like to help our businesses as much as possible to alleviate the, you know, the stress of this. And I would like this plan to move forward and get approved. So if there's a way to thread that needle, I would be supportive of that. That's it from me, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Very much appreciated that. And Councilmember Barton, did you have any comments on this section?
Um, yes. It was interesting to hear. I had almost the exact same questions as all of you, and so it was interesting to hear them being discussed. And now to hear about the INLU mitigation is kind of a, that's a question mark, is, okay, so what would that look like? Just interesting, as we go through all this stuff, what the layers of requirements are, and how to work with Coastal on it and get the plan approved. So, lots and lots to think over.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and move to your mayor. Yes, Councilmember Davis.
Yes. I forgot to weigh in on the low-cost accommodations.
Thank you.
I would like to join you and Councilmember Addis in trying to thread that needle to give the Coastal Commission what they want without putting an undue burden on our business owners.
Thank you.
So I think what I would propose at this point, as it relates to this specific item, is that we'll reach out to the Coastal Commission staff and see, you know, what other options there are out there, or what maybe some other communities are looking at, because some of them are getting to a point where we're at now, getting close to certification. So maybe there's some other things that are out there that we could take a look at, and I'd be happy to see if I can't get that done now and report back at the next meeting.
Thank you, Scott. That would be very appreciated.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I have?
Yes, that's what I'm asking for, Helen.
With respect to lateral access, Scott Graham, did I understand you correctly to say that our LCP calls for eight foot now, but Coastal Commission has been asking for 10 for some time?
It's been conditioning for 10, yes. Since, I mean, for over, I've been here for six and a half years, and I think it predates me by several, so.
So have we built some that are eight feet over the last six years?
I don't know if we built some of, you know, it takes a long time to get through the approval process because of all the hearings you have to have on the waterfront. So there might be some, you know, that were more like the six years ago, that might be built at eight. But all the ones that have been approved, I think probably for the last 10 years, have been 10 feet almost. Is that correct, Cindy? Am I off?
So I've been here since 2010, and going back to even projects that were permitted, like '08, '09, there's actually only been one project that didn't provide 10 feet. And that was 901 in Barcaro, so that's Smith-Held's lease site. And the reason was because of eelgrass constraints. And around the years of 2014, 15, 16, that was a really big push from commission staff, is that you needed to mitigate against eelgrass impacts. You know, that was their hard and fast rule. And then they kind of changed their direction, what their staff would tell myself and Scott, which was, is, you know, if we have to decide between eelgrass protection and coastal access, we're going to try to just always have coastal access and then just mitigate for eelgrass impact, instead of reducing the width of public access to provide more eelgrass onsite mitigation. And then there was one other lease site that was approved in 2010, the Salt Building, and there's just a portion of the Harbor Walk there, where the Coastal Commission added a condition to add a bench, that's technically within what would be the 10-foot area. And they're actually going to the city council for approval of their CUP at the very next meeting, coincidentally, where they would widen their substandard Harbor Walk access from eight to 10 feet.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's necessary to point out, but, you know, this doesn't take place, you know, it's not like you have to do it immediately. It would take place upon redevelopment of the lease site, or significant, you know, with additions to it, or that type of thing.
Okay. Thank you very much for that good discussion on that. Let's move to the next area, the community design element. Let's see, begin, because I was rummaging through here, on page 3-59, 359. I'll take any comments or input on the community design element. Open it up, looking around.
Yeah, I could start if you want, Mayor.
Yeah, Jeff, thank you so much. Please.
Sure. So is this a required element, community design, Scott?
It is not. It's an added element.
You know, in looking at it in the context of the other elements, I like that you've, you know, identified different areas. I think there are 10 character areas. In terms of spending time planning and figuring out, taking care of all the implementation actions that you have there, I personally kind of put it at a low priority item relative to most of the other elements. It's important, but it's not as important as economic development or land use or circulation and others. I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Good point. Appreciate that. Other comments, council members, on the section 3C, the community design elements? If not, that'll move us to 3D, the economic development elements. And let me get to that page. That is page 3-77 in your document. Again, this is not the staff report. I'm working from the Plan Morro Bay document. Page 377 begins the economic development comments of the plan. Let me open it up for any council member. Um, let me open it up for any council member comments or questions on this, three D.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Heller.
So in terms of economic development, is it, is it fair to say that workforce housing, um, affordable housing is the key element to economic development or, or would you rank something higher than that, Scott?
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly one of them. We, we, we need to have housing. Um, we haven't built the, you know, a significant amount of it, although in the last couple of years, we've built more than we have in the past. Um, so yeah, I mean, accommodating that is, is important. It's, it's why we've looked at, you know, in the zoning code anyway, looking at increased heights in portions of the downtown to see what that might look like, to get more density, get more housing, to get people living in areas where they could walk around to, um, you know, restaurants and, and, and stores and that type of thing. Um, so yeah, it is important, um, you know, looking at, you know, the city's infrastructure and its support for that is also important. Um, so yes.
Okay. And the other thing, and this is a little off topic, but have other cities developed affordable housing on property that, that cities own? Is that something we could do here if we wanted to?
We certainly could do that, yes. Or we could, you know, work with folks to, you know, sell property to folks that would, that would develop it for affordable housing. In fact, there's, you know, state requirements that go along those lines now for sure, property that are owned by cities, counties as well.
Okay. Uh, the other economic, um, piece relates to land use and some of the numbers we talked about, uh, and I mean no disrespect to the downtown business district, but when I think about the economy of Morel Bay, I think about the bay, I think about the Embarcadero. Um, in talking with the, um, Embarcadero master lease folks, um, and also getting emails from people, you know, why do we have vacant spaces? Why aren't RFPs more advertised widely? Uh, and my response to most of them frankly is that our phone is not ringing off the hook. Is that fair to say, uh, in terms of, in general terms with respect to the Embarcadero?
Well, as far as the RFP, um, you know, component of things, so there's a lot of, there's a lot that goes into that. I mean, Eric Enderby is on the, you know, is on the Zoom call here, so he can probably speak more specifically to that. A lot of times, you know, it doesn't go out to RFP if council allows us to negotiate directly with the, you know, a current entity that's, that's leasing space along the waterfront that wants to continue to move forward. Um, sometimes we do issue RFPs and it's a little bit of a mixed bag. Um, and Eric has turned his camera on, so maybe he has something to, uh, to add to that.
Hi, yes, good evening, um, Councilmember Heading, and thanks Scott. Yeah, we, um, I mean, even before COVID, you know, we didn't have people leaping out of their seats to, to respond to our RFPs. We've had very limited responses. Um, mostly local folks, um, or maybe regional at most. Um, we've advertised pretty far and wide. I could go on forever with my, my theory on why that may be, but it's, it's just the nature of our beast and, and probably what we typically get unless we have something larger like an entire block to offer up. So I think that's just, just what we've gotten and what we've seen in terms of responses to RFPs.
Okay. Um, so, Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to let other people ask questions. I have some comments, but I'm happy to wait on that if you like, or I can provide my comments now.
No, please do. Please go ahead.
Okay. So in looking at the Embarcadero and the concerns of the leaseholders down there, uh, in the context of economic development, I really see that as being key. And kind of the singular message, if you step back from the details is there's a huge amount of uncertainty for the leaseholders, uh, in terms of what it's going to cost to build their harbor walks, in terms of what it's going to cost for them to maintain, quote unquote, maintain the shoreline protective devices, uh, and a number of other things that coastal commission will have, uh, that will come down the pike in 20 years. Um, I'm just wondering if maybe those two issues should be something we should take off the leaseholders plate and something that the city as a whole, recognizing how important the bay and the Embarcadero is, city as a whole could look at and take those responsibilities off of the leaseholders and provide some certainty and perhaps drive more demand to develop those properties. Um, with respect to sea level rise, particularly the, the, the issues of coastal commission's position on retreat, which I think we deserve some credit for moving our sewer facility three miles inland and uphill. I think we should make it clear to the coastal commission, we're not moving, we're not retreating the Embarcadero. We're not like Cayucus where our main street is, is removed from the beach. We're right on the bay. We're not retreating. Um, however, we also can't predict what the impacts of sea level rise are going to be. And it seems to me like we're kind of putting that entire financial liability on the leaseholders, which doesn't seem reasonable to me. So you think it's possible that there's some way conceptually to, to remove those, those two issues and take them off the plate of the leaseholders and, uh, hopefully give certainty to investors and, and drive future investment?
Um, I mean, Councilmember Heller, you're well aware of the city's financial position to this point, I, I think. We've talked about it, you know, many times.
Definitely.
A point of concern for the council. Um, so I don't know, you know, at least in the near term, where the city would be coming up with funds to implement harbor locks and to raise lease sites without, you know, we have to interact with leaseholders. I mean, a lot of the, um, you know, policies in here have us just paying attention to sea level rise, continue to monitor it, continue to see what's happening. Is it, is it, is it rising faster than we thought it was? Because that's what we've experienced already. Like literally, we did a report, Moffett Nickel put it together for us, they do a great job, and the thing was obsolete in a couple of years. Um, it's disconcerting if you're a planner like me. Um, so, uh, yeah, I mean, I, I think that's largely what the, the report's doing is saying, hey, you have some infrastructure that's down there. Um, you need to be paying attention to how fast sea levels rise. And then when you have opportunities for redevelopment along the waterfront, you know, you need to look out that, you know, 50 year, 40 year horizon and say, hey, do, are we potentially going to need to raise this? Um, and so you need to be looking at those things. Um, I think it would be a very expensive endeavor for the city to take on and, um, you know, we'd have to do, you know, some sort of, you know, engineering study to take a look at what the cost of, you know, for, for that, the entirety of that would be. I mean, I would imagine it'd be fairly expensive.
And all, oh, go ahead, Councilmember.
The other question I have in terms of the maintenance of shoreline protective devices, is the, is the coastal commission fairly flexible in what is defined as maintenance as opposed to a full replacement perhaps, or major, uh, major renovation?
That's a, it's a really good question. Um, you know, we've had really good conversations with them about the waterfront and the maintenance of those facilities. Their thing is, you know, and you'll see language like this in the document is sort of, you know, the least impactful, you know, improvements to maintain the, you know, the facilities that are in place. And, and what that means oftentimes is you can take a look at what's out there, maybe we have like, because we have varying types of revetments down there, right? One, you have a seawall on one, you have one that's concrete, you have another one that's got sheet piles, you have another one that's got riprap. The things they don't like are riprap because the riprap has to go down at a slope that goes out into the water. Those are the ones they don't like. They prefer the wall versions that, you know, that have a smaller footprint. So I would say that's sort of their preference. And so if you, when you're coming back and if you need to redo something, they're going to want something that's got sort of that minimal footprint to protect it. But they fully agree with us that the harbor's not going anywhere. Um, and, and that they want us to be able to, you know, to protect it and maintain it and all of those things. And that's every conversation we've ever had with them. They've never strayed from our ability to do that. And, um, a lot of the nuance in our conversations has been centered on areas that are outside of the improved waterfront, uh, because they really don't want us building seawalls elsewhere, like outside of those areas. I mean, and, and we don't have a lot of the traditional sort of bluff areas in town. We have some, um, and those are the areas where they don't want, um, uh, revetments be put in place and, you know, where we have, um, policies that sort of reflect that. But in the waterfront, they, we spent a lot of time going back and forth with them, making sure that we, our waterfront folks could maintain those properties and repair them as needed. Um, uh, so I think we, our document's pretty good on that side of things, given the a lot of, the amount of back and forth we've had with coastal and, and even coastal coming back to us and saying, we think we need to clarify this language to make it clear that you can do this, you know, type thing versus these areas that are outside the waterfront. And they've done that a couple of different times to provide the clarity. So they've been on board with that.
So you think the language at present is pretty clear in terms of differentiating between the, the needs of the Embarcadero and then the outer, the outer breakwater and so forth?
Yeah, I think we're pretty good there, yes.
What about the rock parking lot?
Rock parking lot is allowed. I mean, I have policies to talk about, you know, evaluating it, potentially raising it, those types of things.
Okay. Yeah, so just to kind of wrap it up, my two major comments about economic development have to do with workforce housing, focusing on that and focusing on finding a way to make investment at the Embarcadero a little more certain, way more certain, I should say. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Um, any other council member comments on section three D? Going once, twice, okay. So as we said, um, we are dividing this up over three separate meetings and, um, about two hours each, and this is the cutoff point that I'd identified for this evening. We've had some excellent dialogue and, um, this item, item B1 will be continued as a public hearing. And Chris, make sure I get this correct in terms of, um, my statement. Um, this item, uh, agenda item B1, uh, will be continued as a public hearing to a date certain. Chris?
Yes, and the date certain should be stated in the time for technicality's sake.
And I should look at my calendar to make sure I get that correct. And that date certain is, excuse me just one second.
May 11th.
May 11th at 5:30 PM. So thank you for robust, uh, uh, input, conversation. Um, again, we will have, um, opportunities for public comment, um, again, at the next meeting, uh, on these issues and look forward to that. Thank you, council members for your work and staff, as always, thank you for, um, your excellent work and responses to this. With that, that will move us to item, um, our first business item, that is C dash one, um, a public meeting to receive public testimony on the reformation of the Morel Bay Tourism Business Improvement District and the levy of assessments. And I will turn it over to Mr. Collins, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, committee members. Um, this is part two of a three or four part, uh, series on the reformation of the Morel Bay Tourism Business Improvement District, T-Bid for short. Uh, we, we've reported to council on this and the T-Bid numerous times, um, and have done outreach to the hoteliers and vacation rental owners that pay into the T-Bid. Um, now since we are seeking any kind of public testimony as we go through the 45 day protest period for the reformation of this, of the, basically a new T-Bid, it's the same T-Bid, but in a new form where it would be a five year, uh, period in which the T-Bid would exist. And it would fall under an independent nonprofit board oversight as opposed to this current structure that has the city overseeing it. Um, the belief being that a five year gives a longer window for strategic initiatives to be undertaken and being independent from the city puts it in the hands of those who, who create the revenues, um, and who have, uh, direct dividends from marketing activities. Um, it's clear from discussions with the T-Bid and hoteliers, vacation rental owners that they want the majority of the positions, again, because they, on the board, because they generate the income, but also see the value in including a city representative on the board as well as a, you know, general, uh, community member. Um, outreach has been done. Uh, we received over 70% support from, uh, vacation rental owners and, um, hoteliers to proceed in this direction. And so we're currently in the 45 day period. Um, we sent out, um, notices to all the current hoteliers and vacation rental owners so that they're aware that this is the protest period, uh, which is going to run through, I believe, uh, up to the June 8th council meeting. I may be off a little bit by that, but that's, it kind of gives you the, the roundabout figures. Um, as, as you recall, um, the main purpose of the T-Bid is to, um, market the Morel Bay, um, community as a destination for tourists. Um, the funds shall be spent in that, uh, in that aspect. Of course, there's some, um, leeway in the budget for administrative costs, but the primary focus is again, is in marketing of the Morel Bay destination. Um, and the change that is being pursued to a five year, uh, from the 89 law to the 1994 law has been, um, conducted throughout the state. And, um, most recent example locally is, uh, Visit Slow Cal, which is actually now on a 10 year plan after they had their initial five year run. And I believe Paso Robles has also pursued that successfully in 2017. So, uh, basically there's no action that needs to be taken tonight by council. It's just another opportunity for, for public comment. Um, we've received a few protests so far, uh, according to Michael Longboat, who's, um, a contract individual who's supporting the city through this transition period. He's done an excellent job in outreach and his phone calls, um, with the, the three protests we received, I think there was confusion that folks thought this was an additional 3% assessment. It was, so there was a bit of confusion. Once he had those conversations, I think they understood and, uh, may withdraw their, um, protests. But, um, in order for a protest to be successful, we need to receive, um, protests from over 50% of the revenue generation businesses in the, the T-Bid district. Um, and as I mentioned before, over 72% have supported, sent their support, um, the initial process that led to where we are today. So I'm happy to entertain any questions you have, but again, you're, the whole, the whole purpose for this evening really is to provide opportunities for, for public comment. So I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, if you have any questions. Chris is here as well. Uh, Kelly Rankin, who, who was with, um, Civitas, who, who kind of created the, the legal framework for this, is also on the line if you have any questions for them.
Great, thank you, Scott. Very much appreciated. And again, council, no action required tonight. This is part of the process. Um, the main portion of this evening is to take public comment, but before I open it, if there are any questions, um, now's your chance. Any questions for Mr. Collins? Hearing none, um, then I will go ahead, Anthony, and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C dash one on the agenda. Um, any member of the public wishing to speak to this item, please, uh, call in now. And Anthony, do we have any public comments, sir?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Chuck Davison with his hand up. I'm going to go ahead and unmute Chuck. Okay, Chuck, you are unmuted.
Welcome, Chuck. Can you hear me?
Yes, and welcome.
Great, Mayor Heading, uh, appreciate the opportunity to be with you, the council members, city manager Collins and city staff. Uh, just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight regarding what we deem an extremely important item in this Morel Bay T-Bid. Um, as I think some of you know, I'm Chuck Davison. I'm the president and CEO of Visit Slow Cal, which, uh, Mr. Collins referred to a few minutes ago. Visit Slow Cal is the countywide destination marketing and management organization, and we're focused on inspiring travel and creating lifelong ambassadors and economic growth for San Luis Obispo County while maintaining and improving the resident quality of life, which I think is a really important piece of not only the work that we do, but I think the work that you continue to do and want to see your tourism group do in your community. Visit Slow Cal's been a longtime partner of the city of Morel Bay and the Morel Bay Tourism Group, um, dating back to my arrival back in 2014. We've worked really closely together to further the Morel Bay tourism economy through our partnerships, co-ops, collaboration, research, destination management and marketing and sales initiatives. And last year, uh, was by far, um, the, the most tragic and consuming for our industry and our communities, the most challenging yet. And really in order to overcome that and return the industry and our communities to their new glory, our efforts will need to be more strategic and more robust than ever. And this new five year T-Bid model allows for that to occur. We believe in the model that, uh, you have in front of you. It's the model that you've allowed us at Visit Slow Cal to operate under for the past six years and the model that you most recently, last year in January 2020, approved for us to operate for an additional 10 years. ...an item in this Morel Bay T-Bid. Um, as I think some of you know, I'm Chuck Davison. I'm the president and CEO. So moving forward, uh, that, that model of five years really provides, uh, a great opportunity, uh, to put the district in hands of the private industry while assuring that partnership, uh, continues to occur with the local governments. In this case, the partnership, uh, continues to occur with the local governments, in this case, the city of Morro Bay. You've seen the success of this model work for Visit Slocow while maintaining partnership and accountability back to you for the work that we do. And this model places the work in the hands of the experts and those that it impacts first in the lodging community while seeking the strategic input from all of you and the local community to do what's right for the tourism industry and your community as well. So this new district accomplishes that exact same thing for Morro Bay that we've been able to accomplish at the county level. And the opportunity in front of Morro Bay remains plentiful. And Visit Slocow, uh, can't be successful, as you know, without Morro Bay's success. And so we are committed to our partnership with you in this endeavor and in doing whatever we can to support you in this new district. So thank you for the chance to speak today.
Thank you, Chuck. Um, Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will go ahead and close public comment for item C dash one. Again, bringing that back to council, um, no, um, action necessary. Again, just, uh, taking public comment on this item tonight unless any of you would like to make any closing Mr. Collins, um, anything else you desire on this item?
No, just, uh, you know, thanks, thank you, Chuck, for your comments and, uh, and all the work of the T-Bid and the, this, um, subcommittee group of, uh, T-Bid Chair, Alan and, um, committee member, Joan Solu. So, um, just great to see the process continue forward. No other comments.
Great. And I will also add my thanks to, uh, Mr. Alan and Ms. Solu. We heard from both of them. Um, Joan spoke earlier for public comment, and Mr. Alan submitted written comments, and I appreciate that. Scott, thank you for all the work that you've done on this to make this transition occur. And, uh, we appreciate that very greatly. With that, that will end item C dash one. Take us to item D, Council, the declaration of future agenda items. And, um, are there any thoughts about future agenda items, folks?
Uh, I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Councilmember Heller.
Uh, to kind of follow up on our discussion tonight about the economic drivers for our city. I, I know we've heard about the challenges and the opportunities related to the physical assets of the waterfront and harbor as well as sustaining our harbor operations. Uh, we've just passed Measure E, which we're very grateful to the residents to supporting it, November 2020 ballot, which really brings us needed revenue to secure public safety services to the community. Um, but we still, we still face significant challenge, funding challenges, uh, needed for improvements for the waterfront docks and the piers, our parking lots, sidewalks, and so forth. The waterfront, I really believe, is the lifeblood of our economy and is something that, uh, all visitors tend to, tend to enjoy and residents cherish and have for generations and will continue to cherish for generations to come. And it's really important that we take care of the harbor and the Embarcadero. So the future agenda item that I'd like to propose is that I'd like to ask staff to bring back sometime in the next several months, uh, some outlines of funding options that we might use to, um, manage the needed improvements in the waterfront area. Um, we should move relatively quickly, I think, because the needs are immense. We're recovering from a pandemic. The interest level is high in the community, at least among all the people I talked to. And, uh, this future agenda item is an opportunity to educate the community about the needs, um, and, and how things are currently funded on the waterfront and the gaps in funding. It's important that everybody in the community understand that. I think we would all benefit from this discussion, and I hope that I can gain support from my colleagues to agendize this, uh, discussion.
Councilmember Heller, I think that's an excellent point. Um, I, I will support that. Um, I assume, uh, Mr. Collins, um, I heard, uh, in Councilmember Heller's recommendation, um, over the next few months, that, that is a timeline that's, um, adequate with regard to your staff and the changes that are occurring. Is that something that's manageable?
Yeah, I believe so. Based on, you know, Eric and I have been, been talking back and forth, uh, the last month or so about, um, because various things are coming up, whether it's the RV program or the fees, um, a lot of questions about, um, what it costs to maintain everything. Um, so we're, we're already sort of pulling that together for, for the budget anyhow. So that definitely could, could be accomplished.
I figured you might be doing that with regard to the budget, so that's timely. And, um, I, I would support that. I will support that as well. Great, thank you.
I can support that.
Great. Senator Marabon?
Yes, me too. And I'm thinking, um, if, if, I'm curious if one of the things that might come out of this would be, uh, some sort of a, a district or, um, the, I've forgotten exactly what the letters were, that was, um, uh, an improvement district that was in the, um, chamber comments. There was a, a suggestion, uh, in there. And I, I wondered if maybe that, that might be part of this discussion.
Certainly could be one of the options to consider for revenues, yes.
Definitely. Yeah, we, we, we can come up with, sort of like we did with the general fund, um, a couple of years ago, uh, just kind of come up with that laundry list and, and go from there.
Great. Any other, uh, future agenda items?
I don't have a future one, but I was wondering when items from last, um, from our last meeting, we're going to come back for review.
Assume we're talking about the, uh, gun safety, education, et cetera. Uh, good, great question, Councilman Radis. Um, Mr., uh, Police Chief Cox, basically, most of the Morro Bay team is off training right now. Um, so I will, I will get back with him later this week and, and let you all know. The full council note via email. Uh, we haven't lost sight of that. I don't, I just don't know how long it'll take, but, um, we're definitely, it's definitely something he's been working on. I just don't have, I haven't had an opportunity to check in with him. I don't want to speak out of it.
That's fine. I asked because somebody asked me, and I said, oh, we, I don't think we defined it last time, so.
Thanks. I made a note on that too, Councilmember Radis. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, if not, thank you very much. Um, the next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, at 5:30 PM via teleconference. Be safe and be well and good evening. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Anthony.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.